Hello.
[laughing] Welcome to Groveland. This is how we do it.
It's a nice process.
This is how we do it.
You did it very well.
Not bad.
Yeah.
I figured we couldn't leave you out there.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 21st Selectment Meeting. Tonight, we're to interview a couple of candidates for a town administrator. We start off with everybody rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got a complaint on the last meeting from a couple people that they couldn't hear the speakers with the masks. So Dan had spoken to the Board of Health, and if you're speaking, we can remove the masks.
Yes.
Thank you, Dan. No public comment. We'll go right into our meeting first with Bernie, Bernie Lynch, that helped the committee do a search. Bernie, I'll give you the floor.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's pretty, pretty simple process. We have two candidates here with us tonight. We presented the names to the board last week, as well as their resumes and some reference comments that we received. As I, I may not have gone into great detail with the reference comments, but essentially, these are as a result of interviews of anywhere from 30 to 60 minutes with each one of the references that were provided to us by the candidates. We do background checks in terms of query checks, education certification, and employment verification, and try to do some social media work or internet searches to flag any serious issues with each, any of the candidates. Typically, that's done before we get to the Board of Selectmen. So these are the two candidates that the screening committee has put forward. The process that was recommended, and I believe the board believes would be the most expeditious for tonight, is for me to facilitate this interview process. So I have some general questions here, and then what I've given you tonight is a, just a, really a draft of some topics that I think would be useful for you to hear the candidates speak to, some potential questions within each topic area, and then some probes that if you feel like you want to jump in on these particular probes or any other probes within those topic areas, drilling down on whatever the candidates speak to. And then there's, there'll be time at the end of the process, too, for you to ask any additional questions that you have of the candidates. Obviously, it goes without saying, there are certain questions that you should not ask. You don't ask about religion, you don't ask about political beliefs, you don't ask about age, marital status, race, nationality, and so on. I'm sure you're all aware of that. And then...
Why not political belief?
Excuse me?
Why not political belief? Seems irrelevant to what we do every day here.
Well, okay. In terms of their party affiliation and who they go for...
In terms of vision and philosophy on government, is that fair game?
Well, you could ask about philosophy of government. That's, that wouldn't be, that would be allowable. So yes, so that's the, those are the, that's the process. Each one should take about 45 to 60 minutes, and then the board can take it under advisement and take actions tonight or at a, at a later date.
I got, I got a question for you...
Sure.
...on the references.
Yep.
It's the first time that I've seen references without mentioning who, who gave the statement.
Right.
I've never seen it done that way.
Yep.
It, it seems to me that it would be easier, it would be better if we knew who was making a particular statement on, on the person. The second comment on the references, obviously, these references were supplied by the candidates.
Correct.
And most of these people are administrative. They're not people down in the trenches doing the work, and I wonder if you reached out to anybody that actually is, is below them that they answer to, that, to see how their interaction is with people down, down and dirty, so to speak.
Sure. Actually, I have. I have spoken to people in Salisbury and people in other communities that they, they work in or have worked in or are familiar with them in some other form. And everyone agrees to their competency and their ability to do the job. As far as the names, the reason that those are not is so that we can get the highest level of confidentiality, of feedback from the references with the promise of confidentiality. Because these are public documents. If these were, if this was being done in a different format, for instance, if you were a department head hiring an employee, that would not be a public process. But as the governing body of the town, this is a public process, and therefore, we try to get the best possible information for you, and the only way you can really do that is by the process that we use. In fact, I don't know of anyone else that actually prepares a report like this for a community. None of the other search firms in Massachusetts do it like this. They simply do a background check at the end and tell you whether it's clean or not clean.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody got any questions for Bernie Lynch? Dan? Any questions for Bernie?
Terms of law procedure? I asked you, I think on the call last time...
Yep.
You chose, out of 20 candidates, you chose two from, two graduates of Suffolk University?
Yes.
We've had other Suffolk grads in house here. Were they connected in any way, or did you ask them if they knew anyone in town?
No. Suffolk is a major university. I actually am an adjunct faculty member at Suffolk. I'd have not had either one of these as students, but it is, if you look at most of the town administrators in Massachusetts, I would venture to guess that most of them are graduates of the Suffolk MPA program.
Okay. Was anyone ruled out because they were not Suffolk grads?
No. No. In fact, the other candidate that we had that subsequently withdrew was not a Suffolk grad.
Okay.
There's no bias towards, as I say, it's the major public administration program.
Seems like a strong suit of some of the candidates, and...
It's the, they're based, they're...
I want to make sure it's not a, a new boys' network versus an old boys' network, you know?
Yeah.
I just, I want to make sure there's no, no, you know, who you know.
Yeah. No. Networking is good, but it's, in this case, it's not who you know. It's a case that Suffolk is the major public administration program in the state for local government, and probably for state government.
Is that...
Its presence on Beacon Hill.
Is a master's in public administration required to be a, a good TA, in your opinion?
I would say that it's the most common graduate degree. Occasionally, there's law degrees, planning degrees, finance degrees, but the most common is public administration.
Okay. And I had asked you previously, as one person bowed out for whatever reason, was that reason given?
Personal reasons.
It was. And you decided, the, the committee decided not to substitute that and move the number four person up, was that, was that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
We had that discussion at the meeting, if one were to withdraw any of the candidates, the three that were chosen to withdraw, whether to move the fourth candidate up, and the decision of the committee was just send whoever we have of the three.
Yeah. I mean, I'm personal preference, I don't speak for the rest of the board, but I mean, I'd like more of a selection than two, but were, were there other suitable candidates in the, in the four, five, and six and beyond spot?
No.
In your opinion?
No.
So it was a clear three, and then the fourth one wasn't, wasn't qualified, in your mind?
No. Not in the opinion of the committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Kathy? Any questions for Bernie?
No, I thought we were going to start the interview.
Okay. Bill, you got any questions before we get started?
Sure. First of all, Mr. Lynch, thank you for attending. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Maybe you could tell the board and for the benefit of the folks that don't know much about the process, we spent $6,000, I guess, with your consulting firm, to initiate and bring us these candidates.
Move the mic closer.
Sure.
Maybe you could tell us a little about, you know, what we got for that $6,000, you know, what your process entailed.
Sure.
How much time was spent vetting the candidates, you know, researching, things like that?
Sure. Well, a couple of things, and I think I mentioned this at last week's meeting as well. We actually came in late to the process. Generally, when we, most, and we've done, we've now done 65 town administrative searches over the last six years here in Massachusetts, the most active recruiting firm in the state. So we think we're pretty, we think we do, we've got this down. But typically, we come in at the beginning of the process, which means that a Board of Selectmen would engage our services. We would come in, we'd speak to members of the board, we'd speak to department heads. We would prepare a position profile, and that position profile would lay out what the issues facing the town are, as well as what the attributes are that you're looking for, from the town administrator candidates, and the success, in particular, the successful candidate. We would then place advertisements and circulate the position throughout the, our network, you know, of managers here in Massachusetts. And generally, we try to go beyond that into the New England area and even beyond that to around the country to get candidates. It's important to note, just by, to digress for a moment, that over the last five years, almost two-thirds of the communities in Massachusetts have changed over their town administrator, mostly because of generational change that's happening. People are retiring, so it's a very competitive market right now. It's very competitive, and obviously, that has limited the pool and also driven up salaries. Just around the corner, you've had a number of communities around you that are, have completed searches or in the process of doing searches right now. So we circulate it to our, our database of candidates that are out there, as well as post it in numerous locations, including the graduate programs and public administration throughout the Commonwealth. And then we collect the resumes, bring them to the committee, work with the committee to narrow those down to a group of candidates that are going to be interviewed. In the case of Groveland, that's when we came into the process. You had already advertised, you'd already put out a job description, you already had a number of people already in place. I believe there were 17 or 18, my memory isn't absolute on that, and we sought additional candidates, and we contacted probably about 15 to 20 additional candidates and asked them if they were interested. We brought in, I believe, three additional candidates to the process, but then we worked with your committee to narrow that field of 20 some odd down to the group that were going to be interviewed. Unfortunately, at least two of the candidates that were chosen for interviews chose not to be interviewed, leaving us with just the four. And then we interviewed those four and narrowed it down to the three, and then we lost another candidate. So during that period of time, for the, your $6,000, you had my attention, working with your committee, to assist them with how to evaluate the candidates, what to look for, the types of questions to ask. We did the background work. We interviewed all of their, the references of these people. As I said, for each one of these references, you're looking at anywhere from 30 to 60-minute interview that was done by a member of the Community Paradigm Team. I met with you last week, albeit via Zoom, and I'm meeting with you here tonight.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'll be available to assist you with the, from a technical assistance standpoint, to work with you and your town council as you negotiate a contract.
Great. So we could have like a 90-day warranty?
Uh, not 90-day, but yeah, sure. 90 days sounds fine.
Mr. Chairman, there is one thing I wanted to ask.
Well, let's go, go to Jason and then to you.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, you're all set. Kathy, go ahead.
Good. I just wanted to clarify that I did call Bernie because I read those comments, those recommendations at the end from the referrals or whatever, you know, people that the candidates had put forward, and I actually liked the fact that they were very honest in what they said about the candidate, what the candidates do in their regular job. I think the fact that they're confidential-enabled people that work with these two candidates to be very, very upfront with us, to tell us exactly what they think of these candidates as to, not in a, not in a bad way, but what has this person actually done in the municipal management world? What have they already done, proven themselves in? And that's what I liked about that part of your report. I really appreciated that.
Well, thank you. Again, what we try to do with this isn't just a, are they good or are they bad, but also give you information about the candidates that hopefully will tell you something about the way they solve problems, the way they interact with the types of issues that they take on, and where their strengths and weaknesses might lie.
Okay.
All right. If you're ready.
I think we're, we're about ready. If anybody has anything else for Bernie, we can get started.
Okay. What I'll do is I'll bring the candidate in, have each of you introduce yourself, and then we'll start the questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe it's not a bad idea to read some of the references of, you know, the candidates so the folks out there can, you know, get a flavor for what their colleagues said.
Let me introduce Christine Lindberg, the first candidate.
Good evening.
Evening.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to start off with the introductions and...
Ed Watson, Board of Selectmen.
Daniel McDonald, how are you?
Bill O'Neill, thank you for coming tonight.
Jason Naves, thank you.
Kathleen Castrenellis.
Great.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Christine, thank you for, for your continued interest in the position here in the town of Groveland as the first town administrator. We were just going over the process we're going to use tonight. We anticipate an interview of approximately 45 to 60 minutes, a number of questions. I'll act as a facilitator to the discussion, and we were discussing the references that we received, and I know as I was leaving, there was some discussion of how the board could communicate this, and so I, I wanted to jump back in for that. You could certainly put these on your webpage. That's, as I said, they're public documents, so that's, it's a great idea, and many communities do actually do that, so that might be one thing you want to consider. But again, thank you for being here, and if you could, just tell the board a little bit about yourself. Most importantly, why are you interested in being the town administrator in the town of Groveland?
Thank you again. Thank you all for having me this evening. So you've seen my submittals, but I'm going to go over a little bit of a recap on that. So I have been in, working for the, I've been working in municipal government for 12 years, and currently employed for the last four years in the town of Drakot. I am the Director of Human Resources for the town of Drakot. Prior to that, I worked in the towns of Salisbury and also the towns of Hamilton. I have a bachelor's degree in political science from Salem State College and a master's degree in public administration from Suffolk University with a concentration in state and local government. I also have a designation from, as a Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official, and I live in the town of Middleton. I have been there for 27 years, and during my time in Middleton, I served in elected positions, 15 years on the Planning Board, nine years on the Board of Selectmen. During that time, I also sat on various boards and committees as either the Planning Board Representative or the Selectmen's Representative to the Communities Preservation Committee, Master Plan Committee, a number of different boards and committees. I have two children who have both graduated from college, private colleges, and I also volunteered in the school system, at the library, on their sports teams, community theater. So as you can see, I'm, I'm very interested and believe strongly in giving back to my community, serving on these, in these important roles. In most small towns, you need to have active citizenry to, to effectuate what you need to do, you know, to run your town government. And the reason why that I am here this evening is because I believe very strongly in public service. This is a position that I have been positioning myself to, to achieve. All of my education and experience has given me the opportunity to be here with you this evening. I think it's a very exciting time for the town of Groveland. There's a lot of changes here with your, your form of government, and I really feel that my education and experience can help you move forward in this process and into your next chapter in the town's history.
Okay. How well do you know Groveland, would you say?
Well, so as I, you know, know a lot of small towns in Essex County. You've been growing. You are financially well-off. You have your median household income exceeds the average for Essex County, but also state of Massachusetts. Your growth rate exceeds that of the state of Massachusetts. So I, it's no wonder that you're now moving into this next chapter in your government administration, because you have even more growth coming forward with, I noticed that the Zoning Board of Appeals has granted a comprehensive permit for a large development project in Groveland. So I think it's important that you move forward with making sure that you are keeping up with the times as far as not only just, you know, with growth, et cetera, but also making sure that the administration is, is being handled in, in the appropriate manner.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Let's, you mentioned the change in the form of government. If you were selected by this board, you'd be the first town administrator. Can you talk to us about what your first 100 days would look like, or six months, whatever period you want to choose? How would you come in and help the board and help the town evaluate the current structure, the processes, the systems? How would that, what would that look like for you?
Sure. I do have some experience in this, in this matter, because when I was working for the town of Hamilton, they went from a three-member Board of Selectmen to a five-member Board, and they went from a town administrator, former government, to a town manager, former government. So I was working in the town and witnessed firsthand that process, how that worked out, some of the struggles that they had, some, some aspects of it were seamless, and other aspects, it took a little bit of work. So for me to, to kind of use that now as a, as a, an example of what I would do, first and foremost, my commitment is to the Board of Selectmen. You are the policy-setting board for the town, so my position would be to work with you to effectuate any policies or vision that you have for the community. So it would be first and foremost to meet with you and individually and get each of your ideas on what you want to see going forward, maybe some things that worked well in the past but haven't worked well in the past, and what you expect from the new town administrator, former government. Next, I would meet with the staff, all of the current employees, again, work with them, find out what, what their needs are, what their take is on this, and what their expectations are of, you know, going forward. Then I would meet with all the boards and committees, reach out to businesses, and, you know, the most important thing is to get the buy-in from the residents, because ultimately, this is their government. And I think, so I think it's important for the new town administrator to really understand where the community is, where they want to go moving forward, and assure them that, you know, I, as the town administrator, am here to work with all of them, to make sure that that transition is as seamless as possible.
Okay. All right. What would you, okay, so would, would that be your primary goal, would you say, in your, let's say, your first year, to just make the transition seamless?
No.
Or are there any other goals that you would hope to achieve?
Well, again, I, I think that the, the Board of Selectmen is going to give me that direction as to exactly what they want to see achieved, and so we would just work together to move that down, you know, move on that path. I don't have any preconceived notions of what that will be, because, again, I work at the direction of the Board of Selectmen, so I would take direction from them and effectuate any, any policies that they put in place.
Okay.
And I think one of the things would be to, you know, really make sure that you're reaching out to the community, to the businesses, et cetera, to all the stakeholders in the community, so that they, everybody has an opportunity to voice their opinion as to what, what they want to see going, moving forward.
How, how do you interact? I mean, you discussed your interaction with the board and the, the approach that you would, and that is the classical definition of the, the board serves as the policy, you would serve as the day-to-day operational person, making sure that their vision, their policies are carried out. How do you build a team of municipal employees? What's your approach to managing and working with the, the staff of the, of the town?
Sure. So management style is going to fluctuate depending on who you're, who you're working with. In situations where I've been tasked to complete a project, if I'm working with department heads, that's going to be a different management style than if I was working with an administrative assistant, or I was working with DPW employees. You know, management decisions and department heads have a better understanding or a deeper understanding of certain things, and are experts in their field, so that takes one type of management style. Working with administrative assistants, et cetera, is a different management style. You may need to have more hand-holding. You may need to have more education for them, explaining things, setting expectations, et cetera. But I think that at the end of the day, the, the goal is to work as a team and earn that confidence of the team, and make sure we're successful in, in the projects that, you know, we're given to, to achieve.
What would you say is, in terms of your, again, looking at your management style, what would you look at as being your, the accomplishment of which you're most proud?
Currently, or going forward? I mean...
No, not going forward.
Okay. Oh, okay, so in my...
So looking back.
Okay.
So for us to understand what Christine Lindberg has accomplished?
There's a lot. Definitely, in my elected positions in Middleton, I feel that we did some really great things there. You know, we, we moved the town forward during a huge growth spurt. A lot of towns in Essex County have been seeing growth spurts, and making that balance between residential, but also business, to minimize the, the tax implications on residents. Certainly, in my employment, I have worked my way up from an assistant to the town administrator to now the Human Resources Director for a very large town. Drakot has 180 full-time, 180 full-time employees, so it's by far the largest town that I've ever worked in. Everything that I've accomplished as far as my education and experience has allowed me to, to move up in that, in that way. So there's, there's definitely a lot of things to be proud of, and I think that the fact that I have been successful in moving forward in my career, I, I can't come up with one particular instance.
Okay.
But I think just in general, I'm not one to sit back and say, okay, I'm, I'm done. I'm constantly striving to reach that next level, learn as much as I can, you know, going forward with education and experience, et cetera.
Well, you were the first, you were the first HR director in Drakot, right?
Yes.
How did you go about building that department?
Yes, so when I first started there, they had an administrative assistant who was managing the day-to-day operations administratively for the department. However, when I was hired, I was tasked with really creating that department from the ground up. So one of the first things that I did was to go in and assess where they were currently, make a list of the things that needed to be changed, work with the town manager, and explain to him what I found, what needed to be addressed. He gave me wide latitude to do the research that I needed to do to improve upon the department. So there were job descriptions that had to be rewritten, policies and procedures that had to be implemented, collective bargaining agreements that had to be updated, collective bargaining agreements that had to be completely rewritten. There were union contracts that were, they were out of contract... There were union contracts that were, they were out of contract, so we had to negotiate all of those. So we worked very, very hard to bring that department up to the level that was needed for a community of that size.
Okay. Great. Thank you. The town administrative position here, you know, prior to this position being posted and created by vote of town meeting, there was a, another position here in town, finance director. The responsibility of the finance director's being moved over to the town administrator with, so the town administrator has a broader portfolio than the finance director might have had. But the fi, the, the town administrator will be responsible for the financial management aspects. Can you speak to us about your experience with municipal finance and budget preparation? Have you ever prepared a budget? What's been, what's been your role in the preparation of a budget? Have you ever done forecasting, what, what that looks like, and your understanding of the process by which Department of Revenue approves the tax rate of the town?
Sure. So currently in Drakett, I assist the town manager with the creation of the budget. One of the largest budget items in any operating budget is going to be your personnel. So personnel salaries, not, and benefits, et cetera. So I work with the department heads in their budget document creation, and also with the town manager in that process. I did that also in the town of Salisbury, assisted the finance director and the town manager with that budget creation. Also in the, when I was on the Board of Selectmen in Middleton for nine years, we would have our yearly budget meetings and budget preparation, and meetings with the finance committee, et cetera. So I had a lot of involvement in that budget process also. Part of that process is the tax recap process and setting the tax rate, et cetera, which I have experience in that. So in our budget preparation, what that usually looks like is, you know, first we have meetings with the finance department and some of the other departments in town, where we look at revenue and expenditures, make sure that we have a good feel on, on where we are within that process. That requires, you know, meetings with the finance committee, or the finance departments, or the Board of Selectmen, et cetera. Next, we would, you know, come up with budget guidelines as to exactly where we want the depart, how we want the department heads to put together their budgets to present to the town manager. Once those guidelines have been established, we send out the budget documents to all the department heads. We ask them to complete them pursuant to the budget guidelines that were voted on. Once we have those budget documents back, we do a complete review. We assess them. We sometimes have to bring the department heads in to ask them to clarify some of the information that they've provided to us. And then there's meetings with the Board of Selectmen, with the finance committee, to really get that budget document to a point where we can go through the process of preparing that for the town meeting warrant, and, and then making, you know, going through the hearings that we have to have, et cetera, for the warrant. The final step, one of the final steps is that then it gets approved at town meeting. And after that, the, the, the final step really is that continuously throughout the year, you're constantly looking at that budget document to make sure that you are on track with your revenue and expenditures, et cetera. So the budget document is, is one of those documents that really is not just numbers, it's, it's really a, a list of priorities of how the town wants to expend their funds, and how they want to allocate their resources to provide the best services to their community in the most fiscally responsible manner. Part of that is the tax recap, as we alluded to. So setting the tax rate is also a, a part of that budget process, but a little bit separate. So that tax recap process starts with, you know, again, looking at your revenue and expenditures, having your assessor's office, your building department, make sure that you understand what your cash value is, any new growth, et cetera. And the, the recap process culminates with us setting the tax rate, which is going to set our budget numbers. And then once that, once the selectmen have their hearing, their tax classification hearing, and vote on their tax rate, that recap sheet is then prepared by the assessors, filed with the Department of Revenue, who then certifies that tax rate, which then allows us to print our tax bills, and the budget contin, you know, the process continues. So the budget is not something that you just put in a drawer, and once it's been approved at town meeting and forget about it. It's something that you have to look at continuously and monthly, we do monthly budget to actuals, and to, to make sure that we're on track with all of our anticipations, anticipated, like revenue and expenditures, et cetera. Sometimes you're, you've exceeded those expectations, and other times you have to make adjustments mid-year.
Well, when you exceed them, you, that generates free cash.
Correct.
Revenue, not expenditures. The, what's your philosophy on the use of free cash?
So that, once the free cash is certified by the Department of Revenue, a lot of towns will go to town meeting in November to see if they can use some of that free cash. Primarily, you want to use it for capital expenditures, one-time expenditures, you know, going to buy a, a fire truck, or some police cruisers, or capital investments that you need to one of your buildings, et cetera. So some towns, you know, have to rely on free cash for operating, but good financial policies dictate that you should use free cash only for one-time revenue expenditures.
Okay. All right. Any questions anyone has at this point?
Kathy, let's start with you. Do you have any questions for her?
I thought we were going to do your questions, now we're going to do ours.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, drilling down in anything that you heard.
Just confuse Kathy.
Okay.
Until you're flat out, because he's going to turn to me every second. Kathy, got anything?
All right. Well, let me, let me move on then. In terms of another, you know, at the beginning of this interview, we were talking primarily about your management style and your approach to being a town administrator, and I was saying, with the budget, was starting to move into the technical aspects of the nuts and bolts of being a town administrator. So the second category would be personnel management. Now, as an HR director, obviously you've, you've been involved in much of that, I would assume. Can you talk to us about your collective bargaining experience, what your role is in the collective bargaining process, and your knowledge of chapter 150E?
Sure. So as, as my role as HR director, I am tasked with assisting the town manager and then the department heads while we negotiate any of the contracts. So usually the town manager will notify me that a union has indicated that they want to meet to, for collective bargaining. I will then meet with the department head, go over the existing contract, identify any areas, we'll, we'll talk about operations of the department, and identify any areas in the contract that may need to be changed, any asks that the town may want. We'll also look and see if there's any outdated language that needs to be changed. Usually if that's the case, I will then notify the union representatives if they would like to meet, so just so we can go over some of the, the contract language, and talk about some ideas that they might have to change some of that outdated language. Then when we, when we start to go through the collective bargaining process, I sit at the table with the department head, the finance director, the town manager, and we walk through the entire contract. We present what the town is asking for, we hear from the union as to what their ask is. You know, we'll, we'll look at, we, we cost everything out. Every, there's a lot of things that'll hap, appear in a budget, not just the cost of living adjustments, but there are other asks that usually have a financial component to them. So it's important for us to, to work together and determine what that financial component is, so we have an overall understanding of what the cost of the collective bargaining agreement is going to be. Once that has been finalized, we do a memorandum of understanding, which is kind of outlines what we discussed in the, in the, in the bargaining process. And once the Board of Selectmen and the, and the union sign that MOA, my job then is to incorporate that, that new information into the existing budget, collective bargaining agreement, and prepare a comprehensive document for all the parties to sign. When I first got to Drakett, the police union, there were, there's two unions, superiors and patrol, their contracts had not been updated for at least fifteen years. So it was a, a huge undertaking to work with both of those unions to bring us together and, and come up with a, a really professionalized, comprehensive collective bargaining document.
Okay. In, in, in addition to the, the other aspect of collective bargaining beyond the, the agreement, and the negotiation of the agreement, is the processing of grievances. What's your role in the grievance process?
Right now, the, the way that we handle the grievances, they, they go to the department head first.
Right.
And then notified, the town manager and myself are notified of the grievance. The town manager will then ask me to meet with both of them to look at the article that has been identified as where we are not in compliance, and I will work with both of them to assist them in their responses to the grievance process. Sometimes it's just an outright denial. Other times, there's ways that we need to change operations to make sure that we're more in compliance with whatever the parameters of the, of the grievance are. So I am active in those, in those grievances. We, we try to minimize them as much as possible. We try to work with the union and come out, come out with a, with a, a solution that makes everyone happy.
Okay. Okay. In your, in Drakett, or in any of the other communities you have worked in with regards to personnel management, I take it you've been involved in the hiring process?
Correct. Yes.
What's that look like? What's, what's your role there?
Sure. So, you know, the town manager will tell me that there, either someone is due to retirement or separation from employment, that there's an opening for a position. My job, my first job is to take the existing job description, look at it, reassess, update it if need to be, professionalize it, because a lot of them have not been updated for quite some time. So we try to take them on a, on a case-by-case basis as, as the position is, is, becomes available. So I will write the job description, send it for review to both department head and the town manager. Once that's approved, I will post the position. If it's a union position, there are guidelines as to how many days and where they have to be posted, et cetera. Once we start, I start to receive applications, again, disseminate them to the manager and to the department head. And when directed, the department head and the manager will tell me that there's certain candidates that they would like to see. I will then call those candidates, schedule those interviews, bring the candidates in. I sit in on the interviews and kind of facilitate the, the interviews for, you know, for the, for the direct, the manager and also the department head. We, all of the parties will, will all weigh in on who we feel is the best candidate for the position. And when the manager approves the appointment of a certain person, my job is then to draft the offer letter, outlining, you know, salary, benefits, all the information that they would need. We then have that person come in, sign their offer letter, start their, their pre-employment paperwork. Once they start their position, I give them all of their policies and procedures, so that they understand what the expectations are in their new employment, and then just try to assist them in any way that I can to, to make them feel comfortable and welcome, you know, in the town.
In terms of HR, the HR function, who handles FMLA, FLSA requirements for the-
I, I handle, yeah, so as a HR director, I handle all the FMLA requests. I also do the workers' compensation and the injured on duty for police and firefighters. I, the benefits administration, I have done that previously in my other jobs, but because Drakett is so large, that is not part of my department, that is part of a different department. But I under, you know, I work with that department.
Did you do eval, did you do annual evaluations in Drakett?
We do annual evaluations of staff. We do not do annual, we don't do annual evaluations of department heads.
You do not do department heads?
They do not, no.
Okay.
But they do of the, of the staff.
Okay.
And so that starts out with the, with the department head, doing their evaluation, and then providing that to the town manager, and then we review those.
And that's a decision of the manager, in that case, to not do the department heads?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Next, nuts and bolts. And this, I'm particularly interested in with your background, is procurement.
Yes.
You, you noted that you have a, you are MCPPO certified. It's unusual to see an HR director with an MCPPO designation. Can you explain, can you speak to that and your, your background with procurement?
Sure. So when I went to the town of Drakett, I had requested that I be able to attend the MCPPO training. And same thing, well, you're an HR director, why do you want to do that? I am one of those people that I'm just never satisfied to sit back. I, I'm constantly wanting to learn and, and get more experience and, and education. So it was something that I had wanted to do. And there were some issues that were going on in the town, again, not that I was involved in, but I understood in the larger, kind of overall, of what was going on, that there was a need for cer, for somebody in the town to be certified. So I requested the town manager if I could do that, and he agreed. Thankfully, I, I got that certification in a time when there were issues that were reported to the Attorney General's Office, that there were irregularities in the procurement process. And because I was the only employee in the town that was certified, MCPPO, they appointed me as the procurement agent, the purchasing agent. Per the charter, the town manager is the chief procurement officer, but he then appointed me to work as the purchasing agent, and also to assist the Attorney General's Office in their investigation as to, into procurement irregularities that had been reported. So I, I worked with Assistant Attorney General Deb Anderson on her investigation. I had to go over the two, last two fiscal years of all of the purchasing orders that were set up by the, in the accountant's office, all the documentation associated with those purchasing orders, and worked with her back and forth to answer her questions and provide her the documentation. I'm, I'm glad to say that, yes, there were irregularities found, however, there was no criminal activity to be found. It was a matter of people didn't know what they didn't know, and that it was evident that we needed to put a better purchasing process in place. So the, we're under consent order with the Attorney General's Office for the, for two years, and we've already expended one year, so one more year. We have to do quarterly reports, list all of the purchasing that we've done, to make sure it's in compliance. A lot of the department heads had to go for training, and we also had to hire a full-time purchasing agent. And Attorney General's Office said it couldn't be me, because I was always, already the HR director, so we had to hire a full-time purchasing agent, which we did. Came up with purchasing policies and procedures, and I was involved in that entire process from start to finish. And I'm, I'm really proud to say that things are, have gone seamlessly going forward, and, and we're in really good shape now with our procurement processes.
What's been your experience with grant management, and, and, I guess, grant management and also project management of major capital initiatives?
Well, you know, on the Board of Selectmen, of course, and we, we'd had, we built a new school, we built a new library. There were other capital expenditures that we would oversee, and made a five-year capital plan. In, when I was in Salisbury, they were building a new library and a new police station. During the police station project, the town manager appointed me to be his representative to the weekly construction meetings, and that took us about a year. So every week for one year, the entire team would meet with the architects and the developers, and go through all the, all the change orders, and really nuts and bolts, day-to-day, understanding the construction of that project. So that, that was, that was an eleven million dollar project at the time. And so that, yeah, I was the, I was the, basically the manager's, you know, appointed representative, and then I would go and I would brief him every week on, on what happened at those construction meetings.
Okay. Great. You know, it's clear that from the beginning of this interview that you enjoy municipal government. Clearly you, you must, you've been doing it in a number of localities. What municipal trends excite you, and how do you stay on top of municipal, you know, sort of new ideas and new innovations in municipal government? in municipal government?
Sure. Well, one of the things about municipalities, we really do rely on each other and bounce ideas off of each other, which is really interesting, because every town is different, structured differently, have different issues. But at the end of the day, you know, we're all trying to get to the same place. Being in so many different communities and also my education at Suffolk and my elected positions have really allowed me to build a vast network of really dedicated and professional municipal employees that I've been able to turn to if, you know, an issue arises that I'm not familiar with, or a new issue. Clearly, what's happened over the last two years with COVID and the public health emergency, there was no playbook for that, and we all relied on each other to make sure that we were successful in working our way through that. Again, every town took a different, different course in how they handled it. But I think that definitely the MMA is a great resource for cities and towns. And just building that network and knowing who to turn to when it's something that you maybe are not familiar with, or you need more help with.
Okay, great. The, why did you, you attended Suffolk, and it was, it's been raised, one of the questions raised by someone has been, you know, why does Suffolk, you know, why Suffolk?
Yeah, well, you know, it's interesting. They had a, or they still have a certificate in local government leadership and management course that they have. And they've also developed a financial management course with the MMA. And they've really identified that there are mid-managers in a lot of cities and towns that need training to be able to take on these positions that have been vacated by longtime employees through retirement. And to ensure that there are people who are educated and informed and ready to take on that next level when those vacancies occur. So I saw that they were offering the Local Government Leadership and Management Certificate Course in Reading, which was close to my home. So I enrolled in that course. And it was five graduate-level courses that, basically, you're allowed to then transition to the full MPA program. So Suffolk has really reached out to all the cities and towns and to municipal employees and really advocated on behalf of making sure that there's qualified people. And once you're in that certificate program, they come and they heavily, you know, come after you to say, hey, you know, why don't you come and do the full MPA program? I never thought that I would have, that I would be able to do that. I always thought, oh, I don't have the time, you know, it's going to be too, the money, you know, things like that. But taking those graduate-level courses really gave you a good overview of what it would be like to be in grad school and kind of eased those fears and prepared you to take that next step. So I did, and it was probably one of the best decisions I ever made. I really, really enjoyed, I know, it's going to sound crazy, but I really enjoyed spending every Saturday in Boston in class. I did, giving my nights and weekends. I thought I was going to go into that program as kind of an older adult, as an older student, and be able to, you know, help my younger classmates understand things. And I'll tell you, I think I learned more from them than they did from me. The people that I met, very impressive, all dedicated municipal employees or public servants. A lot of them worked in state government, a lot of them worked for nonprofits in the Boston area. And just really enjoyed the classwork and what I learned and the networking that I got and the friends that I made in that program. It was a great program.
Great. Moving back into, as we round the corner here for the, of the interview, I'm going to combine a couple of different categories we have here of citizen relations and communication and collaboration. If you came to Groveland as the town administrator, you'd be coming into a different town. This is not your town. You don't live here, and you don't have the experience that you had in Hamilton, Salisbury or Drakett. How would you immerse yourself? How would you, and how would you make sure that there was trust within the community of their local government?
Sure. I think, you know, really getting your face out there and being in the community and letting people meet you and get to know you, not only in your official capacity, but also socially, if you may, attending events and letting people know that you're committed to the community. I know that, you know, I have sat on the position where you are right now. When I was on the Board of Selectmen, I was the chairman, and we hired a town administrator after our former town administrator had been there for 30 years. So we went through this in same, same process and the same concerns, you know, were expressed by members of the community. You know, we don't know this person. How are we going to make sure that they're going to have our best interests at heart, et cetera? So I'm very much aware of that. I know what drives citizens to give up their time away from their families, to volunteer their talents and their free time to serve on these committees, et cetera. So I understand that communication is vitally important across all, not only just amongst boards, but also with other boards and committees. Because all of, anything that's happening here is going to reflect down to other actions that are going to be taken, but also administratively, on the day-to-day, decisions you make affect the staff and what their expectations are for their position. So I think it's really important to get out there, be in the community, you know, introduce yourself to all the boards and committees, let them know that you're there to talk to them, you're there to answer questions, that you want to be involved in the process. And just hope by that process that you learn, earn their trust and their confidence, that you're there to do the best possible job that you can for them.
Great. The, that's a good sort of lead-in to almost the final question that we have here. The relationship you have with the community, the relationship you have with the other boards, the relationship you have with the staff, all very important as a town administrator. Arguably, the most important relationship you have is this board, with the Board of Selectmen. How would you describe or define a successful relationship with the Groveland Board of Selectmen? What would that look like? How do you see that working?
Sure. Well, as I said, you know, the board is the policy-setting board for the town. You're going to tell me what you want. You're going to set the vision. You're going to set the pace. You're going to set the timetable. You're going to set expectations. And you're going to convey that to me. And my job is to make sure that we're all on the same page as to exactly what it is that you want, so that I can then go forward and convey that to the other members, be it the staff, be it other boards and committees, be it the business community, be it the residents, whatever it is that you give me direction to do. And I see my success is based on being able to effectuate whatever you put in place and what your expectations are for the position.
How would you communicate? What does communication look like with the board?
Yeah, so, you know, definitely, you always want to start with the chair, because the chair is the one who is going to disseminate the information to the other board and committee members. However, the chair is just, is one member of the board. Everybody has an equal vote on the board. So I think it's important that the chair be the main point of contact, but that all members be distributed the same information equally. Sometimes, if it's a situation where you don't have a lot of time to delve into it right away, you're going to call, you know, especially in like an emergency or something like that, you want to call the board chair first, let that person know what's going on, and ask them to disseminate the information. And then, when you have more time, you know, sit down with the entire board and explain what happened and go through that process. But I think it's important that everyone be on the same page as to exactly, when the information is coming to them, that everybody gets the same information in a timely manner.
Did you do anything special to prepare for the interview?
I did. I read a lot. I went on your website, I read a lot of your financial documents, I read the information that you had written about, you know, the Town Administrator Special Act. I read your last town meeting warrant, I looked over the budget, I looked over the school budget. I dived in and dove in and got as much information as I could about where you are, where they are, where you are now. And, you know, from what I can see, you have a double A plus bond rating, you are in good financial management, you have, you know, like as I said, you have growth, and that's going to put a strain on your school system. So there's probably some work that needs to be done there to make sure that we have the financial ability in place to absorb some of those new students that are going to be coming to the town. But all in all, it's, I think that you're, the town is in a really good place financially managed, and it's going to be an exciting time to see how you move forward.
Great. Board questions?
Okay, thank you. Dan, you want to start?
You had to pick me, huh?
All right. So I can bypass you, come back to you if you want.
That's all right. So you know a little bit about our history, right? You went online. Not all of us wanted to transition to a town administrator, and I'm one of them.
Okay.
Okay. I don't want to make you or anyone else feel unwelcome, you're welcome here. But do we need a town administrator? And what do you know about that former government compared to what we had previously? And what, you know, what do you foresee as what you would do in that role as, you know, distinctly different from where we're coming from? So I don't know what to expect. So what should I expect from you?
Sure. So, you know, similar to a lot of the smaller towns in Massachusetts, they used to be run by the Board of Selectmen. But over the years and incrementally, you can see that towns are changing their former government to adapt to the times. So the more rules and regulations that are imposed at the state level really require someone who has the experience and education to professionally manage the town. I've, as I said, I've seen that transition in other communities. And so it really does require someone to be there on a daily basis to make sure that administratively, that things are getting done that need to get done in a timely manner and according to the law.
So primarily, you see that because, I guess Beacon Hill imposes regulations on us that become more complex. So when you talk about the, you know, keep up with the times, is it keeping up with Beacon Hill and their compliance requirements? Is that the primary need for a TA within this town, is compliance?
I believe so. I mean, the, clearly, the legislature is constantly enacting new rules and regulations, passing unfunded mandates down to the cities and towns. So it's important to have someone there that can understand what the regulations are and what the requirements are, and to make sure that it's being done in the most fiscally responsible manner and also according to the law.
Okay, sounds good. Terms of budgeting, have you ever run across a budget buster situation in terms of Prop two and a half overrides? Have you had experience in all the years on the Board of Selectmen or in other roles in local government? And, you know, what's your perspective on Prop two and a half limitations?
Sure. Yeah, we had a situation in Middleton when I was on the Board of Selectmen, where Masconomet is a regional high school and with Bauxford and Topsfield. And there was a need for the Middleton to have a Prop two and a half override in order to meet the expectations of the Masconomet budget. Bauxford and Topsfield were able to absorb that, their assessment into their operating budgets. But Middleton was not going to be able to do that, so we had to have an override. Unfortunately, the override did not pass, which resulted in us having to drastically adjust our budgets in order to meet our obligations to the school system and make those adjustments so that we could comply and come up with a balanced budget. And we were able to do that, and we were successful. And we actually, then the next year, we ended up going for a Prop two and a half override to make sure that we met that obligation, but any obligation going forward. So we haven't had to have one now for, for school expenditures, we haven't had to have one now for a while.
Okay. It's good that you mentioned a regional school district. We also have one here, are you aware of that?
Yes.
Penn Tucket Regional? And as far as I know, the agreement between the towns doesn't have a limitation similar to Prop two and a half. So they could give us a 3% or a 4% budget. So would you take a position to try to keep us within Prop two and a half, or you would defer to the, you know, the will of the people, as I've heard over the years in this town? The will of the people, whatever that is, it depends on who you talk to. So what would you do in that situation?
Well, Prop two and a half is for our, the town to be able to set their tax rate and their budget for the fiscal year. The ask from the community, or from the regionalized school district, doesn't have to comply with the Prop two and a half. But I see what you're saying, sometimes their school budget will exceed two and a half, it can go up to 3%, 4%, 5%,
Sure.
which exceeds what we are allowed to raise in revenue. It's just a constant communication with the school department to understand what the expectations are, what our ability is to absorb into our operating budget, and what the implications could be if we had to go to an override or a debt exclusion in order to meet those obligations.
Okay. Terms of the people, I mean, depending on who you talk to, they have different issues in town, okay? If you have school-aged children, you might be a big advocate for the schools. We have retired persons in town, citizens that are on fixed budgets. How would you, how would you communicate with the Board of Selectmen and balance the needs between the, kind of the haves and the have-nots and the, some people in town that want to accessorize everything and with wants versus needs? Do you have any ideas on, on, you know, how to balance the needs of parties within the town?
Sure. I think that every town struggles with that. You have a senior citizen population that's on a fixed budget, and for them to see a debt exclusion or a debt, an override is concerning, because that's going to hit their tax rate. And for sure, they don't have the ability to sometimes absorb that into their own private, you know, budgets for their homes. It's a constant balance of providing for the community, providing for the school system, et cetera. I think that we try to put in place debt or a tax relief for senior citizens and others who are on fixed budgets to offset any kind of increases that we may have to put in place to meet our obligations, especially with education. So it's a constant communication between the boards, committees, the schools, et cetera, to work to make sure that there's a, there's an equitable distribution of that, of that increase that we would need to fund those budgets.
Okay. Do you have any vision for Groveland in terms of growth, or would you look to the Board of Selectmen or the people? I mean, do you have any ideas of your own on where we're going? You talk about growth, you know, I know it's inevitable, but I kind of curse it from time to time. I don't like traffic. I was in Middleton today on Route 62. My office in Danvers is in 62, and I, you know, I don't like that road. Okay. So I don't want any more traffic in town, but I understand we got to pay bills and, you know, I don't own all the real estate in town, so I can't control it, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, do you look at those things in terms of governance, you know? Do we want to be a little town, a little, leave it to Beaver Town, or do we want to be a, you know, more metropolitan? Do you have any ideas on that for Groveland?
Well, again, you know, my job is to effectuate anything that is set by the Board of Selectmen. So my ideas for the town, unless I was asked, I would volunteer them. But really, my job would be to listen to the board, what they need, and then for me to go forward and make that happen. Clearly, nobody likes traffic. I don't think they do. I myself don't like the traffic in Middleton at times. Being on the planning board for 15 years, I can tell you that is one of the things that the courts would tell us repeatedly, is that we do not have a say over the traffic. Certainly, you can do traffic studies to try to mitigate traffic impact, but unfortunately, that is not going to preclude you from being able to approve, you know, development and things like that. Every town, it's good to have a balance of residential to commercial development, so that any time that you need to increase that any time that you need to increase your tax base or your taxes, it's not all going to be absorbed onto your residential taxes. It can be distributed to the businesses also. But definitely, you know, growth is inevitable and you're a beautiful town aesthetically and so there's a lot of open space. You know, being in Middleton for the last 27 years, I have seen we were one of the fastest growing communities in Massachusetts at one point, definitely in Essex County. So we've been through that, we've worked through it. There's ways that you can go about handling that by looking at your zoning, by looking at potential parcels that maybe want to develop and zoning them in a way that would be more conducive to what the vision of the town is. But there are a number of different ways that you can, you can address that.
Okay. How am I doing on time?
We need to get through everybody.
Thank you.
Bill, you want to take over?
Appreciate your answer.
Sure. I'll try to be a brief, I have some questions for you. The first is, how has your experience as a former select board member shaped your views in being a town administrator?
Sure, so, yeah, working for a municipality and then volunteering for a municipality, you definitely get to see both sides of that table. Understanding that what the Board of Selectmen, the votes that they take or the policies that they set, how that's going to affect the staff administratively, I've seen that both ways. So, you know, we would get the town administrator, we'd come to the Board of Selectmen and say we need, you know, this is what we're going to do, this and that, we need a vote, et cetera. Sometimes the Board of Selectmen will do that and they don't understand what that actually means day to day for the staff, what they have to do to set that forward. So I think being on both sides of that, I understand that. And it allows me to be a better communicator with the board and the staff. Because, you know, sometimes the staff might be like, what are they doing? Why did they, why did they do that? Do they have any idea what that's going to do on our side? And that way, it allows you to, you know, explain to the staff or explain to the board, you know, this is going to have implications on the staff, just be, you know, to be prepared for that. So it's that, you have a, you know, you're a small town, you have a small staff. I'm sure people wear many hats here, as most small towns do. So it's important to understand on both sides what some of the policies and decisions and effects they're going to have on both the board, but also on the staff operationally.
Great. You talked about growth and that's always a thorny issue. How, what would you do to help balance the growth in this town while still maintaining the culture and the atmosphere that folks like me have come here for? And as Selectman McDonough referred to, that we don't end up like Danvers or Middleton or Peabody where you leave your driveway and then it takes you 20 minutes to get onto the road.
That has, that has been a struggle. Clearly, for Middleton, we've gone through that also. When I first moved to Middleton, there were cows, and there still are, on 114, which I thought was fascinating because I grew up in the city, so I'm driving down the street.
We have them here too.
Yeah. So you want to keep that hometown, that small-town feel. That's the reason why people came to Middleton in the first place. They, the good school systems, for the rural atmosphere, to see the cows in the morning. So you, you need to balance that, but you can't stop growth. You can mitigate it, you can control it. And the way that you do that, as I said before, was to look at your zoning, look at your master plan for your community. What is the vision that you see for that community? And then look at maybe the parcels that are available or open, et cetera. Do they need to be rezoned? Do they need to be purchased by the town? Do you want open space? Do you not want open space? That is a broader community discussion that you would, you know, go through and ultimately it's at the direction of the Board of Selectmen as to exactly how you want to move forward within that capacity.
Great. What was the greatest challenge in your municipal government life that you faced? And how did you meet that challenge for a successful outcome?
Certainly, I think my position in Drakett has been by far the most challenging. There, it's a much larger community, so there's a lot of much larger issues to be addressed. There were things that were, that I inherited, things that have happened since I've been there. So definitely balancing the desire or the charge of the town manager to start this HR department and be the first director of human resources and trying to convey that to some of the employees who perhaps were not happy that rules and regulations were being implemented and that I was bringing the town into compliance with certain things. One of my, I see my role as an HR director to assist the employees, understand, you know, bringing them on and understanding how to work for the town and what the rules and regulations are, et cetera. But a big part of it is also having to tell people no. And sometimes people don't like to be told no.
Most of the time.
Yeah. Or, you know, well, we always did it this way. Why are you changing it? Et cetera. So that definitely has been a challenge. But overall, I'm very proud of the work that I've done there. It's been successful, but definitely there have been challenges.
Great. One more question and then I'm going to have a shameless plug. What position, role, past the present, has best prepared you to take on the role of a town administrator?
Can I say being a mother? Because I think if...
You can say anything you want. It's an open discussion.
Because I think if you can manage two teenagers, you can do just about anything. No, definitely, I think just incrementally, everything that I've done since I first started. Prior to working in municipal government, I was, I worked as a legal secretary for various law firms in the Boston area for a number of years. I think that that definitely gave me a lot of background in the law and also helping me, my writing ability. But every position that I've taken, I started out as, you know, an assistant to the manager and the Board of Selectmen and have moved my way up now to management position. So I think all of them incrementally have assisted me in preparing for this position.
Great. Now the shameless plug and invite. You want to get to meet the town folk Saturday, Groveland Day, the Pines Recreation right next door. You'll probably meet half of the Groveland folk here and they're great, great people. So you're invited. Come on down.
Thank you so much and I will definitely be here.
And thank you for coming. I appreciate all your time and all your honest questions and answers to those questions.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
Jason?
Yes. You mentioned earlier that to have a successful government, you have to have an act of citizenry. What do you think would be your role in promoting an act of citizenry?
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's important to reach out to the residents and let them know if there's openings on boards and committees. I think also too, a lot of people are afraid to do that because I think that they think that it's too much time or effort, et cetera. Just kind of, kind of allay some of those fears that, you know, it's not hard. We need their input. It's extremely important in order for them to, for the town to be successful, especially small towns. They, you know, you rely on your elected boards and committees and you need them to make these important decisions. So, you know, some people like to sit at home and yell at the TV and say, you know, oh, they should do this, they should do that. And I say, please, calm down. I think sometimes your most vocal critic is the person that you want on the board because you want, you want to be able to educate them and have them be part of the process. And I think that that's a really good way to get people to buy into volunteering in their community.
Great. And then in terms of bringing new grants to Groveland, what do you think your role would be in that?
So, yeah, so I know that Bernie had asked me previously about that. So I've worked on the community compact grants that Governor Baker's office has been instituting over the last couple of years, have really given municipalities an opportunity to look at all different types of things. There's a community compact grant that we're, right now, round that is open. We're going to do an HR grant and we're also going to do a stormwater management grant. We're going to, you know, take an opportunity for that. So definitely I've applied, worked with other department heads to apply for those types of grants and then work with the state facilitator or whoever they assign. Like it's a technology grant, they'll usually assign someone from a state agency to assist the town and et cetera. So I've, I have some experience with that. But definitely, it's a matter of, you know, just keeping your finger on the pulse basically and monitoring those things and seeing what those opportunities are. Usually the MMA is one who will come and let you know about grant rounds, et cetera. So the state is usually pretty good about communicating that. And it's just a matter of delegating that or working with your department, other department heads to make sure that you take advantage of many of those as you can.
Awesome. And then the only other question is, what is your opinion of the employees that you've spoken to here at Town Hall?
I haven't really spoken to many employees. The town accountant was very helpful in getting me some of the information that I had requested because I couldn't find it on the town website. So she did provide me with that. But aside from that, I really have not had any communication with any of the other employees.
Great, thank you.
Kathy?
Um, yeah, thank you. Get to take my mask off for a few minutes, breathe some air. Thank you, first of all, for coming here. I think I'm more nervous than you are, probably. I felt like it was going down to run for an election because it's been a long time coming to get this position through a town meeting and through a process. And I think I have to say that I'm grateful that we brought in a professional because even though our hearts and efforts are in the right place, there's some areas that we're just not that skillful in, you know, even on the Board of Selectmen, even after a number of years. But as I read through these things, I wanted to, I don't want to embarrass you, but I have to read this and ask you if you have any idea in response to what kind of a project they might be talking about. This individual said Christine has vision and sets achievable goals and holds herself and her team members accountable for achieving those goals. She is easy to work with and is responsive and respectful to others. That's an amazing comment.
Well, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, whoever made that comment. I appreciate that very much.
Okay, well, watching you tonight and the way you speak of how you got to where you are tonight, you talk about building, building your steps, building your career and building your path and finding out that you can get there. So to me, that's a pretty blatant illustration of a vision and goal setting. And you come here tonight to a town that's never had a town administrator, so you will be breaking new ground.
Yes.
I mean, there's, there's not like a TA desk really or anything that you would say, I mean, we'll give you a desk, you know, I'm not saying you won't have a desk. Maybe not a chair, but no, just kidding. You will be breaking new ground. Okay. Can you say, have you had any thoughts about if you were to start work in this town? What do you, how do you think you would structure your first couple of weeks?
Yeah, I mean, definitely first and foremost to meet with each of the board members individually to really get a candid assessment of what's working, what's not working, what you would like to see going forward, et cetera. And then meeting with the staff, all the department heads, all the staff. I want to meet with every, as many people as I possibly can. Tending board and committee meetings. I had also talked about, you know, I think it's important that the public get to know you. So, you know, coming in with a box of Joe and a box of donuts, seven o'clock in the morning, saying, I'm here, come on in. I can get some work done. If people come in, we can have a candid conversation and just really understand where you've been as a town, where you are as a town and where you want to go as a town. I think that having that buy-in from the residents is so key because, like you said, there's so many unknowns and because it's a new position, so many people are, you know, what is this going to look like? And we don't know what this is going to look like and maybe we're nervous about what this is going to look like and who is this person? I think that all of that can be allayed by just familiarizing yourself with the person and me also getting to familiarize myself with the people in the town.
Okay. And you've gotten our financial records, you've looked them over. Would it throw you off course or discourage you if I were to tell you that we've just received an additional assessment from our regional school district and we don't really quite know if we have the money? I mean, we have it in the stabilization, but other than that, how would you go about figuring that out for us?
Sure. So first and foremost, we would sit down, we would look at the budget as it's structured, look at the assessment and the effect that it's going to have on that budget. And then we start to look at creative ways to potentially maybe delay some of the projects that were proposed in order to meet the obligations for the school. There's all different ways that you can do it, but really you have to kind of get in there, get the documents, get the numbers, really take a look at it top to bottom and try to come up with creative ideas as to ways that you can meet the obligations, still provide the services that you need to, but maybe see if there's some things that maybe can be put on the back burner until we have a better understanding of exactly where we are financially.
Okay, so you would come up with options for us?
There would be options, absolutely. One of the things that you'll see from me is I'm, you know, if a situation arises, I'm going to come to you and I'm going to tell you what the situation is, but I'm not going to tell you what the situation is and then say, okay, what do you want to do about it? I'm going to have probably three or four options or suggestions. It's up to you to decide how you want to move forward. But I will have the options, I will have the implications of those options and give you as much data as I possibly can so that you can make the most informed decision as to how you want to move forward.
Good answer. We have this school building project that's a big deal. There've been some hiccups on it. And we have a volunteer on our board that stays on top of it.
There's no hiccups. There's no hiccups.
The fire on the roof?
Yeah, it's not a hiccup.
Two fires.
Two fires.
No.
Full disclosure. But...
Not going to delay the project or not going to cost a single dime to the taxpayer either incident.
Okay. How would you, how would you go about becoming familiar enough with it to help keep everyone informed?
So as I stated previously, when I served in Salisbury and I was the manager's appointee to that, to the weekly construction meetings, there were always things that came up that were delaying the project, cost overruns, change orders, et cetera. So it's, you know, you've got to look at the project in totality and try to address the situations as they arise in a way that it will not delay the project any further. Again, there, I don't know specifically, you know, what's happening, but there's always going to be, I mean, anybody who's done any work on their home knows that there's always going to be delays and cost overruns, et cetera. Construction costs constantly go up. So it's not uncommon for there to be issues along the way. The goal is to get the project in on time and on budget.
And my last question, we, as other towns, have had over the last five years, I would say, a lot of retirements, people that had worked for us for, you know, 20, 30 years retired. And so we had that turnover and then in the midst of that, we had the loss of our finance director in a pandemic. And as a result, I think that we're a little bit short-staffed. We're having trouble filling some positions, not just this one, but other lower ones. And it's difficult for us to determine how well the staffing is working or not working. What would you propose to do to get us on the same page so that we know what kind of staffing is going to help manage the town best and, you know, best bang for the buck for our taxpayer?
Sure, yeah. So a lot of cities and towns are seeing this. There's a lot of people retiring, a lot of institutional knowledge leaving the building, which is, makes it a challenge. Certainly, anytime that you advertise for a position, you're going to want to attract and retain the best possible candidates for that position. I think first and foremost, I would sit down with the staff that's here currently and again, get their candid assessment as to what's working, what's not working, because they're doing the job day to day, so they're going to know what the needs are. And then come up with a plan to present to the board. And it may not be able to be implemented in full right off the bat. in full right off the bat, but certainly you can have that overall, overall plan, and then start incrementally to, to achieve that plan. Some things you can do, you know, completely at once, a lot of times you have to, it's good to have that overall plan, but then do it step by step, so that you achieve that goal within a certain time. But, yeah, definitely, it's, it's been, it's been challenging for a lot of cities and towns to fill positions, a lot of retirements.
Okay. So you mentioned you grew up in the city, is it the Boston City or?
Somerville, yes.
Somerville, okay. And then you went to Middleton and found cows?
Found cows, yeah. And I said, this is where I'm going to raise my children. And, and it's, it's one of the best decisions I ever made.
Yeah, it's a beautiful area. One last thing. I know you say that you're prepared for this job, you've been working towards this job. The collective people on this interview sheet also say that you are well-prepared for the job. And they cite your knowledge of collective bargaining, your leadership skills, collaborative team leader, municipal finance. I mean, there doesn't seem to be a gap anywhere right here that I can see. And you want to come to this tiny little town, though, from your big 180-person office, right? I think that's exceptional, if, if that's what you want.
Yeah, my goal has always been to be a town administrator in a small town in Essex County. Because I, I really enjoyed my time on the Board of Selectmen, and I felt that that really gave me an understanding of how small towns work, and what you need, what needs to be done in order to get that communication against, between the boards and committees and the, and the Town Hall staff. It's something that I've been successful at, and I enjoy very much. And so, for me, this would be a, a perfect fit for me to take that next step in, in my career.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for, for coming, feeling some interest. You covered grants, covered budget. Oh, one thing on the grants. You, Bernie mentioned grants, and, but, as a, I, I don't see that as the HR director's role, is to be doing, doing any grant writing.
Not primarily, but if there are community compact grants that affect the HR department, and there is a round that is open right now that we're going to be applying for, and there is an HR segment of that community compact grant, and there's multiple different things that you can apply for with, under that HR segment. So therefore, I've been tasked with working with the stormwater manager, because we're going to combine those two, because you can only have two department heads on one application. So we've determined that those would be the two areas that they would like to apply for the grant for this round. So sometimes, sometimes, it, you know, it is in that realm, but, you know, other times it's not.
Who, who's the other one, the administrator on that stormwater management grant?
We have a stormwater director.
Oh, okay, all right. That's good. We do too, but he also wears about four different hats.
Exactly.
Let's see. Oh. You, you mentioned here, let me go to community involvement. And I think that's a big thing. Can you list what you did when you were in Hamilton, in Salisbury, in Drakett, with community involvement, involved in events of the towns?
So, I mean, like a organizing event?
No, not, like attending. Organizing, attending, showing up in the three places you were. Hamilton first, Salisbury, and then in, in Drakett. What have you done as far as the community involvement?
My community involvement has been limited, only because with my positions, it wasn't required for me to attend some of those things. In Hamilton, I would attend some of the community events. They would have the jumper classic at the Miopia Hunt Club every year, and that was always an interesting event, and meet a lot of town residents there. A number of the people that I work with in, in each of those towns are also residents of the towns. So I became very familiar and friendly with some of those people, and would attend some private events with, with them through the town. But as far as other events, I wouldn't. Of course, in Middleton, I was at all of the events for Pumpkin Festival, and anything else that, you know, that they would have, an opening, or a retirement party, or anything. I was...
Well, that's part of the role of a Board of Selectmen.
Exactly. So that, that was more like my roles in the selectmen, but in my, in my employment roles, I, I really didn't attend too many events.
Okay. And you, in, in the town of Drakett, you list, you list the experience, experience with conducting assessment centers and promotional exam processes for public safety employees. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with the civil service process. State runs the exams. You want, Drakett notifies them that they, they have one opening, they send three names. If, if, the powers that be do the right thing, they take the top name. Other than that, they end up by having to prove why they didn't take the top name, why they bypassed the top person and went to the second person. So, can you, can you just, I, I don't see where, where that needs much assessment, and/or assistance from the HR director?
Sure. So, there are many different ways that you can do promotionals, promotions, or bring on new employees through civil service. One of them is through the assessment center process, and that is usually utilized when you want to promote from within. So there is a mechanism where you can hire a consultant. You can have a sole, it's called a sole assessment center. You have your employees who are currently employed by the town, apply. So we did a sole assessment center for promotional exams, promotional process for police a few years ago, and we're just now finishing our promotional process for our fire department. So our fire chief just retired. We did a sole assessment center. We had assessments for both the chief's position, the deputy chief's position, and the captain's position.
Hey, do they, do they take, do they take a civil service test for that?
They don't take a civil service test. They have, you, you get the option of going through this, what's called the assessment center instead. So, part of that, there are some written, there's a written parameter of that, et cetera, but the consultant, it's usually a scenario-based assessment center. And so, when we want to bring a new firefighter on, an entry-level firefighter, yes, that comes off the list, that's provided by civil service. And also, our lieutenants on the fire department can take a civil service test, and the civil service will give us a list. So when we want to, when, when everybody's going to move up in this process, there will be openings for the lieutenant's position, and those lieutenants will be filled by the civil service tests that they took. They would not part of the assessment center.
Okay. Now, I've been doing some, some looking on the, in, in Drakett, where you are, you're on the senior management team. You got, you got a fire chief that retiring soon. You got a town manager that left in a hurry. You got the, it seemed like there was another one that left, but I don't remember what that was. And now you've got the, the HR director looking to move, move on. What's going on up there that everybody wants to bail out? It doesn't seem like it's a coercive environment.
Again, in, in any, any big town, you're going to get a lot of movement. In the four years that I've been there, I can't tell you how many DPW employees have transitioned out of the town. Police and fire are pretty stagnant, usually just, they leave because of retirement. But definitely, department heads come and go, maybe because they leave because they're going to take their next step in their career, or they've moved, or there's all kinds of reasons why people, why people leave. The fire chief definitely is retiring. And, yes, the town manager, due to procurement issues that I discussed earlier...
Yeah, you mentioned that.
He, he left, and I believe he works for the state of Massachusetts now. So there, there definitely are some struggles that the town of Drakett has, has been going through. That's what's made my position there a little challenging. But it's, all in all, I, I, I love the people that I work with. It's a really great, dedicated, professional staff in that Town Hall, and all the other departments.
Can you, can you touch on the, on the lawsuits against you as a human resources director, the fire chief, the town manager, and, and others? I know it's still tied up in court. The, the one that I found, and then I found bits and pieces on, on others, by other employees that have a lawsuit against you as a member of the town. And I know you throw everybody in there, and you try, you try to come up with, with something. Can you touch on that stuff? That, that troubles me.
Sure. So, as you know, I'm limited as to what I can say, because it is pending in federal court, and it, it does involve personnel-related matters. However, I can assure you that the allegations that have been leveled are not factual. As you know, anybody can file a lawsuit, but it's a matter of then actually producing evidence to support the allegations better in that lawsuit. And when the lawsuit was filed two years ago, the town's attorney immediately filed a motion to dismiss. They didn't even file an answer to the complaint. And that motion to dismiss has been sitting in federal court for two years. So, we still have not even gotten to the point where we can move forward on, on any of the allegations, because the motion to dismiss is, is still pending. We haven't gotten a hearing on it yet.
Now, getting back to the town manager that, that left, and you, you mentioned procurement issues.
Yes.
I thought you were the procurement officer in Drakett. How do you, how do you explain that?
So, he was the chief?
No, that's, that, that's not, I, I'll let you respond yourself. That, that's clearly not what, what she said. She explained that she was asked to become the procurement officer to clear up the procurement mess, because there was not a procurement officer.
Okay, okay.
So, per the charter, the, the town manager is the chief procurement officer. But when the irregularities were flagged to the Attorney General's office, and I was the only person in town that was a certified procurement officer, MCPPO, he made me, designated me as the purchasing agent, so that I could work in conjunction with the Attorney General's office to resolve and answer all of her questions, and provide her with all the documents and information that she needed in order to do her investigation.
And then they, and then you mentioned that they hired a separate procurement officer.
Yes, as part of the...
All right, thank you.
Agreement.
I, I've been involved in, in union negotiations on the municipal side as an employee. And I'll tell you, I, I never remember the HR director having any active role in, in the contract procedures. And, and I'm talking about a municipality of over 50,000 people. The, the HR director, and I think it was more than one person in the office, never, never took a role in, in the contract negotiations. Never, never met with any of the representatives. I, I, I'm not sure that that's a, a role that I've seen the HR director do.
Yeah, I mean, and, and Drakett, that's what they have me do. I think because I have such in-depth knowledge of the actual wording in the documents, because I've been charged with writing them, reviewing them, I'll sit with the department head and go through the entire document and say, this is antiquated language that needs to be changed, or this is not meeting operational, current operations, and so we need to, you know, change it so that it addresses current operations, et cetera. So, some of the contracts had very, very old language, and nobody had really ever really taken the time to look at. And so I, as part of when I first started there, I went through every collective bargaining agreement, and highlighted and made detailed notes of exactly where they were deficient and where we needed to update.
Boy, you got that right. I'm, I'm, I think I'm all set. We've, I kind of went a little bit over time. Anybody got any follow-up?
Yeah.
You got a follow-up?
So you read everything?
Yes.
Do you read everything before you sign it?
Yes.
You know.
Do.
That's good to know.
I, I, I...
Don't ask why.
I'm extremely...
Don't ask why, unless you watch the videos on YouTube, Groveland.com, whatever it is.
Please ask them why.
Why?
I don't know. Does Drakett reimburse health insurance for $81,000 a year? I'm just curious. Strike that. So with what you've known, it seems like you've gone through some troubles and tribulations there, and it happens from time to time. And you can't, you know, prevent people from making assertions against you, whether true, false, or otherwise. We like to stay out of trouble here. At least I try to, sometimes. But, you know, is it fair to say you've learned from experience, you know, maybe how to avoid some, you know, litigious situations?
I think that anytime that there's a failure in any kind of operations or, or anything, you learn more from failures than you do from successes. And definitely, I've, I've, over the years, I've seen managers of all different stripes, and have, you know, determined that I will adopt the, the good, and learn from the bad, and try not to make those mistakes again. Certainly, you know, nobody's perfect, but I really do try to be as prepared as I possibly can be, before I make a decision or sign a document, et cetera. That's just part of my training, and why I, I feel like I've, I've been successful to, to this point. Because I, I, I am always prepared.
Okay. When you're only 90% sure, or 99, would you, would you, would you pick up the phone and call Town Council, or, or the chairman of the Board of Selectmen? I mean, how would you handle that? Or would you proceed?
I am not afraid to ask questions, and people will come to me and say, you know, I have a stupid question. And I tell them, there is no such thing as a stupid question. I would rather have somebody come and ask me before they do something, and rather than have to, you know, correct the, the mistake at the, on the other end, because sometimes those mistakes can be, can be catastrophic. So it's, it's better to ask first. And if that takes, means that there has to be a delay, so that you can get all the information that you need to make the decision, then that's what we'll do.
So you're erring the side of caution.
Absolutely.
That's what we need here. So you, it's fair to say, no one's ever called you a know-it-all.
No, absolutely not. I am the first one to tell you if I make a mistake, and I will be the first one to tell you that I don't know. But I have a vast network of very dedicated and professional people that I can call and get that information.
Appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming in. Good luck, and we'll, we'll be in touch.
Well, I really want to, again, thank you very much for having me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions you've got for us?
That's what I was thinking. We're supposed to let her ask questions, too.
No, I...
Make them easy, eh?
No, I, I think this was a very constructive, very constructive conversation, and I learned a lot from the questions that you've asked of me. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. And if I'm offered the position, I can assure you that I will do the best possible job that I can to move the town forward into this next chapter in their history.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I feel like we should applaud, but...
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.
Take a break for a minute?
Five-minute stretch?
Oh, I need it.
Sure. Jason will be in a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff.
Thank you. Welcome back. We're here, we have James Ryan, candidate for town administrator. Bernie, we'll turn the floor over to you for-
Want to introduce everyone or have them introduce themselves? I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Ahmed Watson, chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Dan?
I'm Daniel McDonald. I'm not chairman of the board. Sorry, I'm bored.
Yeah, I'm Bill O'Neill.
Jason Naves.
Kathleen Castren Ellis.
And you know Bernie.
I know Bernie. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
This on?
There you go.
All right. I'm on two. Is it green?
So, James, want to get this started? We have about, we have a number of questions that I'll go through, and then the board has a number of their own questions that they'll be asking. So, I'll just, why don't we get started? You now know the board so well with their introductions. Let's learn a little bit more about you. Could you take a few minutes to talk about your career path and how you ended up applying for this job? Why you're interested in coming to Groveland?
Okay. So, I'm James Ryan, as you know. I guess we'll start, I got a master's degree in public administration from Suffolk. Around that time was when I began establishing a career path forward. I decided, okay, what level of government do I want to work in? Couple inspirational teachers helped me realize that, you know, in local government, that's where the rubber meets the road. We're the closest to the people you're serving. So, that was of greater interest to me. Then after, I said, okay, well, what town do I envision myself working for and serving? That town would have to remind me of home. I grew up in a much bigger town of Drakett, but when you're growing up on the side of Drakett, the east side I grew up on, it feels very small. That's where all the farmland is. That's where all the, it's all residential, almost no business. And so, I always thought of myself as someone who would be a small-town town administrator. Because the other alluring thing about that is, when you work for a small town, you get to, you have the ability to meet and know all the people who serve along with you, every police officer, every librarian. So, you know, working for a bigger city, that's a little harder. After that, I attained a job as the budget and finance analyst for the town of Wellesley. I can go into a lot of details if you'd like, but there I handled everything from formatting spreadsheets to presenting capital, the capital plan, the five-year capital plan to the Board of Selectmen, and doing a lot of high-level stuff, putting in the budget into our municipal system, managing the municipal system, helping departments fill out their budget requests, you know, helping them understand the guidelines. Did that for about three years, and I obtained a job as Neil Harrington, the town manager of Salisbury. His chief aide and human resource director. And so, like many people who work for municipalities, I wear many hats. And so, I handle any and all type of projects or issues that come up that he needs me to do. And I also handle all the human resources functions for him. So, everything from, again, basic stuff like employee changes up to negotiating our benefits rates, managing the insurance advisory committee, which I put together full of municipal employees and a retired representative, you know, collective bargaining, through all the high-level stuff you'd think of. I also now handle all of our IT needs and that budget. I handle our, I handle, I do a lot of procurement for him. I do the Maya lines of insurance, property casualty, professional lines, along with IOD, injured on duty, and workers' compensation. I handle all that. I handle our website, our social media, a little bit of everything. And I think what appeals to me the most about Groveland is that it's, you know, it's a charming town, and I'm not just blowing smoke here. You know, I've visited the town multiple times since this process started. You do have a wonderful town here, and it's the type of town where, small enough, I can get to know all the employees. It's the type of town I envisioned myself, you know, serving. And additionally, I think you have something that other towns don't have, is that you are putting forward this town administrator position for the first time. And I think helping you flesh out what that position will do and what it will become, because I'm very flexible, that's very intriguing to me. So, I think that's a good summary of my background and why I want to work for this very lovely town.
Great. And you gave me a great segue. You talked about how you come and you visit, and you tell a little bit about the town, but you talked about the move to a new town administrator. And that's actually our next question, is if you were chosen for this position, you would be the first town administrator, how would you, what would it look like? What would your process look like whereby you would evaluate and, you know, sort of bring value to the town as a result of this position? How would you evaluate the organization and come forward with the ideas to, again, achieve the value of the position?
So, I think it starts with my onboarding plan. So, it would be to first understand from you, the, you know, executive board, what you expect of this position, what your vision for the town is, because I serve, you know, I would be serving at the pleasure of the Board of Selectmen. You know, at the same time, I would be getting out into the different municipal buildings and meeting all of our employees, but especially setting up one-on-one meetings with your department heads, some of which I've already spoken to. But, again, we would have a more formal meeting where I would understand what their needs are, what their challenges are, where they wish to go, what their goals are. And of course, I'd be meeting with, trying to go to as many board and committee meetings as possible and meeting all of your volunteers that help make the town run. And from all those conversations, I would develop an action plan for you, goals, that I would submit to you for approval. We could have a selectmen's workshop to go over that. And from that document, we could set a list of goals that we worked to achieve over the first year. And then during all that, you know, in the beginning phases, you know, I'd need to come in and understand what you may have going on currently, understand what deadlines you may have, make sure as little as possible, if anything slips under the rug, prevent as much of that as possible. And, of course, take the weight off of some of your current employees who are doing extra with, you know, someone not being in this position and doing a lot of that work. And also, getting out to the community as much as possible, maybe going to a local chamber of commerce meeting and going into businesses and meeting some of those people. Some of that will happen early, as I get coffee down the street, as I did one of the times I was here. You have a lovely coffee shop nearby, and, you know, as I order food, as I did twice at the, I think it's called Riverside Pizza, right over here. So, some of those conversations may happen quickly. I visited your dog park twice because I have a five-month-old puppy, so that dog park's of interest to me. And I saw that someone outside had a Bark Park bumper sticker. I have to say, I'm a little biased on that project. So, and when I was visiting the dog park, that's when I was able to speak with several of your residents, plus through other connections, I connected with a couple more. Our superintendent, Brian Forcher, actually lives in town, so I spoke to him, and another gentleman who does some work here in town, who lives in town. And so, I would do a lot more of that, and that would help me assess where the town is, what the needs of the towns are, you know, combination of working with you, staff, business owners, and residents to see where we are and where we need to go.
Okay. From that, you'd set up goals of-
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. How would you describe your management style? Could you give us some examples that would help us understand what that management style looks like?
Sure. So, I would say I have, you know, I want to give, you know, I've done my research on your town. You do have some very high-level, top-tier department heads and chiefs, you know, running this town, so I'd want to give them the latitude to do their jobs. But I am a, you know, trust-but-verify type of person, so I am hands-off and very collaborative, but we would be working, you know, together. And so, I think some, to your question, some examples of that were, would be in the areas of, you know, in Salisbury, before I came, the Human Resource Department wasn't really a place that people, you know, came to for services and questions. When I started, the first thing I did was reach out to literally everyone, especially department heads. And I began building a network of relationships so that Human Resources did become sort of a central hub to ask about benefits and ask about changes. And, you know, if there's an issue or a potential issue, you know, department heads, staff, union reps, they will come to me and ask me first, and we will often, you know, solve the problem, you know, quickly before it even gets to the town manager's desk. So, I think that's a good example of my sort of collaborative nature, but my willingness to empower others. I guess the empower part, you know, I set up, under chapter 32B, the municipal health insurance law, there is a requirement that you have an insurance advisory committee. Salisbury didn't have one at the time, and that's okay. We set one up. And I, you know, have since helped run that committee, and I empower these employees. So, it's made up of all of our, a member of our collective bargaining units plus a retiring representative. I empower them to do all this learning and get, ask questions. And through that, we've been able to do a lot of innovative things, which I can go into more detail about. But I think those are some good examples of how I have a collaborative, but management style that also empowers these department heads and staff to get their work done.
You went under 32B with the IAC, which is Insurance Advisory Committee, which is required by law. Have you, has Salisbury adopted the Public Employees Committee, the, under the 2012 health insurance modernization? I'm forgetting the section.
But the answer's no.
Okay. Good. Okay. Thanks. You knew what I was talking about there. So, well, let's, in terms of your management style, let's talk about your, let's talk about what you would consider your proudest accomplishment that reflects your management style. You started to talk about the IAC and some of the stuff you've done with health insurance. Talk about that.
Okay. I can give you a couple of examples if you want. I don't know if this first one is, you know, what you're exactly looking for, but it's the honest truth. When someone asks me what your most proudest accomplishment is, it's developing all these relationships in the town of Salisbury. Again, I go back to my department, the, well, the Human Resources Section. I'm in the town manager's departmental budget, but as people see it, you know, Human Resources wasn't really anything that provided too much of a benefit to them. You know, some people never went to, you know, Human Resources for questions or services. Now, everyone does when they need to. I know everyone, they know me. And, you know, at the very least, people know who I am, and at most, I have good working relationships with most of the staff in town. I'm very proud of that. I consider some of- I consider some of those people my friends. You know, that would be, if I were so lucky to be offered this job with you, that would be by far the hardest thing, would be to leave those people behind. But I know they're in good hands and I'm encouraged by the fact that you have good staff here and I can build those relationships again. But that is truly my number one, you know, thing, accomplishment that I'm most proud of of.
Okay. All right. Let's get into the nuts and bolts of, you know, these have sort of been these big-picture responsibilities or style of a town administrator. But I want to get into, for the next few questions, the nuts and bolts of town administration. Financial management, what's been your role and experience in preparation of a annual municipal budget? And could you walk us through what that process would look like?
Sure. So, in Wellesley, again, finance and budget analyst. I did everything from formatting spreadsheets and rolling data over to the new fiscal year and inputting COLAs and other contractual changes that, especially ones that maybe didn't look like they cost money, but ended up costing money. And so, I made, I would make those changes. I would communicate out guidelines to department heads and work with them so that they understood what their guidelines were. You know, my budget can only grow by 2%. My budget can only grow by 3%. And then there were many departments, you know, a lot of pros down there, but budget may not be their thing, so I would help them directly fill out their templates and budget their expenses. That part was easier for me because we were sending them monthly, I was sending them monthly budget reports anyway, and so, we always kind of knew where their expenses were at the time and what they should budget going forward. And they would talk with me about their needs for the future year. So, I would put that all together. You know, I was also the one charged, they had a very robust, what they called Warrant Advisory Committee there, which was, I think, similar to your Finance Committee. So, they really kind of drilled down into all aspects of the budget. I essentially put together all their documents for them, including all their financial charts that would go up in front of town meeting or on the town's website. And then in Salisbury, you know, that didn't end. You know, I essentially managed the Town Manager's Departmental Budget. I'm doing most of the spending out of it, so I guess I should. And then I've recently taken over the IT budget because the person who was doing that a few months ago retired. I handle all the lines of the Maya property casualty liability, you know, the workers' compensation line, the injured-on-duty line, all of our benefits, all those lines, the health insurance and dental and life insurance. So, all of those lines, each year, I have to provide that information to the Finance Director and obviously, I'm working with the Town Manager. Again, he gives me great leeway to go and just get things done for him, but I do keep him well-informed and, you know, I help them, I help them put all that together each year. And then we often sit and go over capital needs together and we work with the departments to determine what we can afford one year versus what we can afford another year. And then just recently, not long ago, I think two years ago, I approached the Town Manager and said, hey, you know, I think we need to kind of get a handle on what we're doing for part-time employee raises, because it was kind of slapdash all over the place. And so, now, he, myself and the Finance Director meet annually to look at that more closely. That way, it's kind of more fair and evenly distributed across the board. So, it's become a much more fair process. And of course, we look at revenues together and make sure that things are trending, especially in Salisbury. You know, if we have a bad summer, it really, you know, should I say rainy, cold summer like we had this year, it really does damage to our parking revenue at the beach, because, you know, no one's going to the beach during a rainy day. And so, we have to watch that during, you know, the months of, probably May through September. And of course, we have a recreational marijuana facility that's been bringing in good money, but, you know, with the pandemic, it's been up and down. So, these things have been challenging and I've been a part of helping address those throughout the years.
Do you do much in the way of forecasting?
A little bit with Neil, Town Manager of Salisbury. I think more so in Wellesley, the Finance Director there, Cheryl Struthers, top-tier professional. And, you know, our sister, she taught me, you know, all the tricks and trades to accurate forecasting, looking at not only your trends, but your economic forecast and market trends. So, again, you know, right now, for example, you know, recreational marijuana is huge, but, you know, some people think that eventually it'll, the market will become saturated in these places, you know, the amount of revenue coming in is going to change drastically. So, you've got to take those types of things into consideration when you're doing forecasting.
Okay. Do you, are you involved on the final, the tax recap process at the, at the end of the, you know, for the filings for the state to have them approve the tax rate? Do you get involved in that at all?
So, well, you know, I have to be honest, I know that's part of this job description, but, you know, I've always worked with strong Finance Directors, so I'll be honest and say that's something I have to learn. More than capable of learning it, I have enough finance experience that that wouldn't be a problem and I have great resources to help me learn it. And there's a good chance I'll know how to do it before I even step foot in Groveland. But to answer your question, no.
Okay. Moving into the next area, what's your philosophy on the use of free cash?
I think free cash generally should be ideally used to purchase, you know, infrequent, larger, you know, purchases. But, you know, I do know that a lot of municipalities have to use it to plug their budget. You know, we often kind of have a sort of structural deficit sometimes, and if you're part of a school district that kind of, you know, has a big budget and can spend a little more. I mean, you know, it's, the reality is the reality, but that's ideally how you use it. And, but, you know, even Wellesley with all their money would use a lot of free cash each year to fill their budget gap, so.
Yeah. Okay. The next area of nuts and bolts, we'll call it, is personnel management. And you've spoken of your role in HR, so, but I would like to ask you a few questions about that. How involved are you with collective bargaining under the manager?
Yeah. So, I'm part of Neil Harrington's collective bargaining team. So, it's always him and I and the subject area expert. So, if it's a fire contract, the fire chief, police contract, police chief. And we sit down with them, you know, prior to negotiations each year to understand what's going on in the contract, what they've seen. We review it ourselves. Of course, you can review it all you want. You need the subject area expert to, you know, help you with certain things, because how it looks on paper can be implemented differently or implemented a certain way. So, having that team there to discuss and go over what the contract is and develop bargaining goals, administrative goals for the bargaining session is key before you go in there for a number of reasons. So, we sit down well in advance, plan this out, things that we might want to do, language changes, you know, certain money changes, changes to benefits, whatever it may be. And then as the process approaches, we would probably reach out to, you know, they usually reach out to us first and request that we begin the bargain. That's usually the kickoff point, but if they haven't and we're approaching the end of contract, we do reach out to them. And then the first session is normally a ground rule-setting session where we come in and spend most of that session just saying, okay, you know, how many huddles can you take? You know, how many breaks can you take? What's the longest that we should go for? What is, I'm blanking, but what is the, how many meetings until you can no longer present new items for discussion? And then, if that goes quick enough, then we might, you know, present some basic ideas at first and then it goes from there. And of course, I've been involved. You know, we have a standard policy, which I think is a good procedure, that with minimal exception, we have one person who's speaking, because you don't want multiple people speaking at once, because then you end up having side negotiations going at the table and that's helpful to no one. So, he'll do most of the talking and we'll huddle whenever we need to discuss something. I've done a lot of, I've suggested a lot of changes, I've written a lot of changes. You know, I cost out a lot of things for him and I do a lot of surveys when we need to to figure out, you know, if they're, if what they're asking for is reasonable or not reasonable. And then, of course, the, you know, we work with the Selectmen to understand what their goals are as well, because they have their own goals. And at the end of the day, this has to go in front of them for approval. So, I'd say that's a decent summary of what I do.
All right. Yeah. Do you get involved in the grievance process at all?
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, the grievances, the formal grievances do go to the Town Manager. They're always discussed with me, of course. We always kind of game-plan and huddle about what to do. But what I've found over the years is that we don't get too many grievances anymore because I've built relationships with all these people and they come to me before it becomes a formal grievance and we usually work it out before it even gets to his table. So, that's not only efficient, but it's a way of, you know, saved him some headaches, I think.
Okay. All right. How involved are you in the hiring of employees? I had an opportunity to work with you on the MVRTA search.
Oh, yes. Good job, by the way.
Thank you. I saw how you interacted and had a number of ideas. How involved are you with the Salisbury search process?
So, once I began, we, you know, we saw the need to kind of centralize things more. I mean, just on a basic level, when you're advertising a position and resumes of cover that's coming, there's a, there's a records retention law of one year for anyone who applies to anything. And so, it became important and the town is, you know, it's the town's responsibility, you know, so the department, individual departments may not, you know, realize this. And so, we, so everything flows through me and my email and my office. You know, I standardize a lot of procedures that we do, you know, how we advertise, the steps we take first, you know. You know, first, a position needs to be approved and then we move to advertise and after we write the job description, of course. And, you know, I will typically write up a draft and send it to the department head for tweaks. That takes a load off, you know, something off their plate and, you know, and I have a lot of experience doing that. So, it works out well for them. You know, they've been very grateful for this change. And then, you know, we advertise, we agree on, you know, places to advertise. You know, there's a lot of professional organizations you can advertise on, I know you know this. So, we do that, we accept resumes in, we typically, you know, I give a lot of leeway to the department heads, but I do give them my opinion on people who, you know, meet the qualifications that we were requesting. And, you know, I do give my feedback, they do, I think, respect my opinion and after that, we select candidates. We, I call the candidates and, you know, work out the schedules, then we meet. I typically will come with a template of questions. There's a, you know, format competency-based interviewing that I introduced into the town, which is essentially following the STAR acronym, Situation, Task, Action, Results. And so, you ask questions based on that, much like you're doing. And you interview to this and of course, the department heads will chime in with as many questions as they need. And we work on those questions together beforehand. And then, once things are hired, you know, there's a form that I created that kind of standardizes the beginning parts of hiring, has some basic information I need to, you know, get them in for paperwork and, you know, give it to the Town Manager so he can see. Town Manager usually writes an appointment letter, which I typically draft for him to save him time again. And then, when they're hired, they come in, do all the paperwork with me and they get going. I also call the references and do all that stuff as well.
Okay. Great. Do you guys do annual reviews there? Moments evaluations?
So, no, because all of our employees are unionized with the exception of the contractual employees, Finance Director, two chiefs. And I'm in Human Resource, so I can't be in a bargaining unit. And we do have two admins who are in the unit. So, the vast majority of our employees are in a union, there's no process set up. I have drafted for the Town Manager a review template, should he ever decide to work that into contracts. It just hasn't been at the high end of our list yet.
So, along those lines, and this can make it tie back to the management style, how do you hold employees, how would you envision, if you were a town administrator here, how would you envision directing employees and holding them accountable? You know, sort of that balance of, you know, encouraging them and holding them accountable? How would you go about doing that?
Well, I think that begins when you, when you first come in, as I did in Salisbury. You're going to meet with them, understand what they're working on, what their challenges are, what their goals are, understanding their department, showing them respect. You know, I will never know what it's like to be a firefighter or a police officer or a planner, so you have to, or a librarian, so you have to know that, you know, these are subject area experts. And good thing is, my hunger for knowledge makes me interested in what they do, so I learn as much as I can. So, knowing their jobs is helpful in holding them accountable. You can't hold someone accountable if you have no idea what they do. And so, you start by building a relationship with them, understanding what they're doing and then helping them accomplish that. And by doing so, you end up setting goals for them, especially when you're kind of there with them, you know, assisting them and supporting them. Because, I mean, one of the things I would ask right up front is, you know, how can I be the best town administrator I can be for you and your department and your operations? So, by doing that, you get a lay of the land of what they're doing and how you can hold them accountable. And again, I give them the leeway to run their departments and do their jobs, but I tend to follow up and want to be loosely informed. And so, they get a sense that, okay, he cares, he's supporting, but he's also watching. I think that's a good way to really keep people moving.
Okay. Great. MCPPO certified?
Yes. Yep. I started that in Wellesley and just recently was recertified.
Okay. Great. So, you handle all, did you handle all the procurement for Salisbury?
Not all of it. Neil empowers his Department to do some of it, but I've done a good amount of it and I've done a lot in Wellesley, too.
Okay. Really?
Yeah.
Do they have procurement officers? They must have.
No, that's, Wellesley is the most decentralized form of government you will ever find.
I know that, but I thought they must have a procurement.
No, I think by, through their bylaws, I think the Executive Director might technically be, but it's also decentralized, they all do their own thing. But with the small departments in Wellesley, that's where I did a ton of stuff for them. So, I, that was something I took on voluntarily and of course, Cheryl Struthers being a great, you know, mentor encouraged me to go do it and we found extensive use for it, lots of it, yeah.
Yeah. Good. Interesting. Grants. What's been your experience with grant writing and what's been your experience with project management, capital project management?
Okay. So, first with the grants. Two grants in particular, I got for the town for the first time. So, the Town Manager told me, we had never previously received, so like I said, I handle all the Maya stuff, the insurance lines, and Maya puts out a grant opportunity each year. I received that grant two years in a row, a little over $7,000, and then one year, a little over $4,000 in grant money from that. There was a Department of Industrial Accidents Safety Grant that I found, and I think that one was almost $8,000, that grant that I got. And then, the biggest one that I've received to date for the town was for the Streetlight retrofit, which I think your, you have a light department that, I think they did that for you. In Salisbury, we retrofitted about 800 streetlights. The, that was a DOE R grant administered through the Massachusetts Area Planning Commission. And so, that grant was for $50,000. And then, also, when you do that, you get a utility rebate incentive from National Grid that was $75,000. And so, all that money taken in, which will add to the next part of your question, because I managed that whole project. But that project was such a slam dunk, because not only did changing to LEDs from the high-pressure sodium, the old-school lights, not only did that increase safety for drivers, pedestrians and public safety departments, but it was a slam dunk and cut our electricity bill in half. The project paid for itself in a year and a half. As far as project management, that was actually a very, that was a project I managed from the very beginning all the way to the very end. I managed the grant, the budget, all the different vendors we had. I had to first secure a streetlight audit vendor to come in and do an audit of our lights to see what was ours. Then after that, we got into the MAPC, grouped us together with a bunch of other towns and we did a large procurement for the retrofit installer, and so, we chose that person. Throughout this entire process, oh, and then, when it was done, me and the Department of Public Works did a bid to get a streetlight maintenance vendor as well. So, we owned the lights at the end, so we had to hire, have a vendor to come in and change light bulbs when they inevitably go out. And so, I did that whole project being the end, managing all the invoices, managing the grants, watching the budget, dealing with, we had one large change order, which, you know, procurement 101, if you have a change order, make sure, make sure it's, you know, rightful, make sure that they're not, just not trying to, you know, say, oh, yeah, you need a little more money for this. So, we had a wiring issue in all our lights, they think it's because of the salt in the air being near the beach. And so, I said, okay, well, I'm going to have someone go check. And I had our, I asked our foreman at DBW to go get one of those lights, they were taking down. And sure enough, those wires inside were corroded, so we had to... And sure enough, those wires inside were corroded, so we had to appropriate some more money to compensate for that. So, that was a project that was a lot of work, but benefited Salisbury immensely.
The town owns the lights now?
Yep, yep, fantastic.
Did you use George Woodbury for that?
Yes, for the, yes, he was our consultant who did the inventory, and then he helped manage, he worked with me on the rest of the project, yep.
Yeah, okay. Been doing that forever. Okay, you know, it's clear from your background that you, you know, you've been in municipal government, working in municipal government for quite a while, and you made the decision to do that, you know, right out of grad school. How do you stay on top of current trends and where municipal government is going?
Oh, thank you, that's a good question. That's a passion of mine, I like to keep learning. My enthusiasm for the profession kind of makes me a lifelong learner. You know, I want a great municipal HR listserv, we can bounce questions off each other all the time. And, you know, I make sure to read every email that comes through, because I may not have a question, but something may come through with a lot of documents that may benefit us in the future. So, I'm often pulling things down to save, just in the event that we need it. There's also the Massachusetts Municipal Human Resource Association, MMA has, you know, a Managers Association, and all these associations have all these webinars and live events that you can go to to learn about changes. The annual conference that MMA has always has, you know, speakers on different topics, going over best practices. And, you know, there are some towns that are, you know, way ahead of the curve on a lot of stuff, and they'll get the representatives from those towns to speak. There's also a labor law update that I go to every year, whether it's in person or now online, with various, you know, top-tier legal firms that tell you about all the changes that are going on. You know, I'm on a number of listservs that, you know, always send regular information. You know, KP Law, who is our, and I think yours as well, legal counsel, they send out monthly newsletters. And so, I make sure to read all those all the time. And every now and then, I find something new to go to, and I sign up with them. And so, you know, there's never been anything major or minor that I've missed, because I'm always on something where I see the information. Even going to MMA's, you know, front page, they're often reporting on changes in the legislature that are coming down. So, it's very important in my job to stay on top of things, and I do my best to do so.
Okay, why did you choose Suffolk?
Well, that's a good question. It's, so going back, when I was working on my bachelor's, we eventually did, one of the things I did to earn some credit, I did an internship in Washington DC. And I met some, made some friends down there, and they were going to Suffolk University, I think for their masters, or maybe they were doing undergrad there. But they talked up that school, and they said it has a great public administration program. From there, I looked into it, and it was, a lot of high-tier professionals come out of there. It was also in Boston, so, you know, being from Drakett, I think it was intriguing to me. No one likes to drive, but it's intriguing to me to be able to go into Boston multiple days a week. So, it was pretty exciting to me. It's, Suffolk literally overlooks the State House, which I thought was pretty cool. So, a whole host of reasons, and, you know, I made a lot of good friends, met a lot of amazing professionals, had a lot of mentors come from there, and I couldn't have been happier with my education. The only thing I will say, though, every school I've ever left takes my money and then builds brand-new buildings, and it looks amazing, and I miss out on all that. Suffolk did the same thing.
They want to thank you for your money.
Yeah, exactly.
The next set of questions, I'm going to sort of combine. If you were to assume this position, if you were selected and assumed this position, you know, you're from Drakett, you work in Salisbury, you live in Haverhill, you'd be sort of coming into Groveland, how would you get to know Groveland more? How would you engage with the community? And what actions would you take to help build local trust, or trust in local government?
Okay, so, I think your question's more pointed towards the community, because, you know, with the staff, I've kind of talked about that, I would continue doing those things. With the, yeah, with the community, yeah, I think it'd be beneficial to go to a lot of community events and meet people. Like I've said, I know it sounds silly, but it works. I've already said I'm a fan of the Dog Park, you'll see me there a lot. And that's a good place to meet people, I met several people there, when was I there, Sunday? So, that was a good place to meet some people. So, community events, you know, public spaces, you know, baseball games. You know, I think having, you know, when an issue comes up, or maybe even getting ahead of an issue, having, you know, a neighborhood meeting, inviting people from a certain part of town to Town Hall to have a discussion, I think is good. You know, I've even, you know, in the past, put out messages either in departments or even on the tax bills. When we were advertising for our social media, which is a way to engage the community, just to advertise for it, one of the things I did was I put a small message on the bottom of everyone's tax bills. And so, did everything I could to kind of get that message out there, you know, hung up signs and posted things around Town Hall and did the tax bill thing. So, you know, a combination of things, these things, I mean, I think even when someone comes in to, you know, get one of our services, whether they're paying your tax bill or getting a dog license from the town clerk's office or anything like that, if I'm in the hallway, I think that's a great opportunity to say hello and start to build that trust and relationship and kind of get your face out there.
Okay, great. Arguably, the most important relationship you have outside, you know, you have the relationship with the staff, the relationship with the, you know, the other boards and committees and the public, but the relationship with the Board of Selectmen. What do you envision, again, you'd be the first town administrator. So, how would you define a successful relationship between a board, the board and a town administrator?
Well, I mean, I'll never be afraid to give you my opinion if you want it, but I view a very successful relationship as one where you kind of set the vision, and then I help you get there. So, you know, you tell me where to go, and I kind of drive us. And I think that's what a good town administrator does, they bring your vision to fruition. That's what I would do, and I think that's a good relationship. So, it begins with me getting to know you, you getting to know me, and over time, we'll create a good working relationship together, and I'll help you bring your vision to life.
How do you, how would you communicate with the board? That's the number-one issue with every town administrator, I'll tell you this, this is my words of wisdom, is always communication. How do you envision communication working with the board?
I mean, I think it's important to understand, you know, what each of you, you know, is interested in and the level of communication that you want, you know. I'm very flexible, you know, if you want me to, you know, shoot you an email for X, Y, and Z, I'm gonna. If you need a phone call, if you're less of an email person, you know, that's what I'm going to do. If you want physical copies of things, I mean, that's what I'm going to get you. So, you know, again, I'm flexible, my communication with you is going to be whatever you need it to be. And, you know, I will deliver on that.
Other than the Dog Park, how else, did you do anything else special to prepare for the interview?
Sure. Well, so, I read the last year's worth of your meeting minutes, I've watched the last couple months of your meetings on YouTube. I, you know, did as deep of a dive into, you know, your budget and your website as I can, tried to learn as much about your staffing levels as I could. I visited your town multiple times, I found a zoning map on your website, and so, I, you know, figured out the best I could where all the business-zoned areas were, and I visited those to kind of see what was there. You know, I looked up projects of interest, I know not long ago, you did the roofs on the senior housing right back here, so I took a drive back there and saw those. Yeah, I came to this complex, I goes, "Oh, there's a whole bunch of stuff that I came here to look, all right here." And I saw your dock down there. I, geez, what else did I do? I also reached out to some of your staff who worked here. Both chiefs were kind enough to take my call and tell me about their departments, what they're working on, their challenges. I knew they were good before I called them, but that was just, you know, that was just a cherry on top. So, I think that covers most of what I've done, I mean.
Great.
Yeah, a lot of visits to town, a lot of locations to see. You know, I know you've got a 192-unit 40B going in Seawall, I think, so you've got some development going on. So, I think, things like that, yeah.
And you had coffee and pizza?
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, lots of pizza.
Good, all right. I'll turn it over to the board.
Kathy, you want to start?
Um, no, pick somebody else, let me just get ready.
All right.
Thank you.
Dan?
Are you always frost?
Well, consistency.
I tried.
What are my parameters on political questions?
You'd have to refresh them on that, you know that.
You mentioned 40B. What do you think about 40B in Massachusetts? You got an opinion on communities and what impact it has on the communities in general?
Well, 40B, you know, I think, I think, I think the heart might have been in the right place for it, because, you know, it's very expensive to live in Massachusetts, I'm sure you all know. And so, I think the idea behind it was to encourage affordable places to live for people who, you know, have tons of means. I think in some towns, it's been very beneficial. I do think, though, that, you know, if you're not careful, too much comes in. I mean, it can be, it can be quite a blow, you know, if you have a lot of young families coming into these developments. You know, like I said, 192 units, I think you have going up, if you get, I don't think this is positive, if you've got 192 families, that is a hit to, you know, your education bill before, you know, the tax revenue even comes in, that's always something that happens, family moves in, they start taking advantage of services right away, you don't actually receive any benefit from tax revenue until at least the next fiscal year. So, that, you know, that can be hard, and plus, you're going to get more public safety calls and things like that. So, I think the intent was well-meaning, and I think it works in a lot of places. I think it's beneficial in a lot of places, but it's not going to be beneficial everywhere.
So, we have those issues here. What challenges do you see this town having with growth? Not only just from 40B, but recently, a town meeting it passed that you could basically have not just an in-law apartment in your house, you can have an apartment in your house unrelated. So, we're going to have an expansion of units and families of just small people. So, how would you help this town manage that growth that is inevitably coming our way?
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, if people are doing major renovations to their homes, to get in-law apartments and things like that, you've got to have your assessor go out and get that new growth, because that's going to be, in addition to your Prop 2 and 1/2, it's 2 and 1/2 plus new growth. So, I mean, that type of strategy can help soften that blow a little bit. You know, and as far as development goes, you know, I, being an outsider, I don't live here, and I don't work here. I can't speak too much to what the town may want, but that's what you have to figure out. You have to have those conversations with the people who live here and figure out, okay, do you want businesses in here? And what kind of businesses do you want? And I see a lot of mom-and-pop type places around here, having more of those in smartly-zoned areas may be something that the town wants, that the residents want. You know, if that's the case, we can work on that, and we can work on that together. So, but being an outsider, I don't know. We have to have those conversations in-house, because, you know, in a lot of smaller towns, their people have been here for a long time, and they don't want to see a lot of change. And then, you have a lot of people who may be more new in town and do want to see some growth and some change and see some certain businesses come in. A lot of people don't like industrial, because it's those types of, those types of businesses tend to be loud, and they rip up your roads. Some people, you know, would want, you know, as an example of a town I know who kind of, sort of poached a deal from another town, and they brought in a big, kind of, medical building, which I think was nice, but I don't know how the residents felt about that, because in the area, it's much different than what's around there. You have all these kind of mom-and-pop places, and you have this big medical building. So, to understand where we need to go, we need to understand what the people want, I think.
Okay, appreciate that answer. You're in Salisbury, and Salisbury has a vast and varied business clientele, I would say.
We have interesting businesses for sure.
Yeah, you do. And you have a medical marijuana dispensary, is that true, or a recreational one?
We have a recreational, and I think within that recreational, they were doing medical, and I forget if they switched, I'm pretty sure they still do medical there, actually, so it's both. And then, we have another recreational coming, and then, we have a grow facility coming.
So, do you see those, that industry as positive for the town of Salisbury? Are you at liberty to say that? Do you have a formed opinion on that?
I mean, to be honest with you, I haven't seen any negative repercussions of it. You know, these places tend to be very kind of upscale-looking, so it's not like you drive by it and you can tell it's some sort of drug den or something. If you've ever been inside one of them, they're clean, they don't really have the product out anywhere, they just kind of have menus, and then, everything's stored safely in the back. And on the positive side of it, I mean, it's a business that doesn't require much, you know, service from the town, and it provides, at this point in time, a whole ton of revenue to the town. But, you know, some people, I mean, you know, marijuana is a drug, and I'm definitely not going to say, you know, "Go do marijuana," but, you know, a lot of people take issue with that. So, again, it would be, you know, I think it's more of a benefit than a detriment, but I completely understand if people don't want it in their town, it's an odd thing to people.
Okay, so, on something like that, if it was a controversial issue, would you just, you know, just sit back and go with the majority, or would you spearhead anything? Do you have any, you know, things that you want to advocate for?
Well, I mean, as a town administrator, I think it's more of our job to, again, be the one to kind of drive your vehicle, and you all make the vision. I don't think it's our place to come into your town and tell you, you know, and spearhead things, you know. I'm an administrator, not a politician, doesn't mean I don't have opinions, but, you know, I'm going to follow your vision, it's your town. So, you know, I will, yeah, I think it's good to have, when something like that's coming in, it's controversial, good to have neighborhood meetings and, you know, bring people in for Q and As, and I'd be happy to host those and run them, but as far as advocating, I wouldn't. I'm your administrator, I'm your top, I'd be your top professional. The board can act as the visionaries for it, and can advocate or not advocate for things.
And would that, would you apply that also to whether or not you, you know, want to tax and spend, or do you have a vision on, what should government at the local level be? What should it be?
Well, I think at the municipal level, it's definitely one where we need to provide certain basic services. And then, after that, if there is money and people want other things, then we give it to them. But again, it depends on the board, you know, you're elected directly by the people, so you're kind of their representatives, not to say we can't always get feedback from them, but you're their representatives, and so, your vision is what I will help you bring to life. You know, I would say, you know, my philosophy is one of good government. You know, I've worked in the industry for a while, I see a lot of amazing professionals who work just as hard as anyone in any other sector or in any other line of work. Of course, you have the occasional bad apple, just like you have anywhere. But, you know, I'm a believer in government, but I'm a believer in the government you want. So, you know, if, you know, it's like Salisbury, for example, has their own Council on Aging Center, it's a very big building, I just helped them redo the roof through that procurement, and I'm very close with the senior center director there, they do a lot of programs. You know, the building obviously costs money, the staff costs money, it's two full-time people there, and they have a couple part-time, a couple part-time employees. And so, that staffing level, I believe, is bigger than what I've seen here in Groveland. You know, Salisbury wants it, and they can afford it, and so, they have it. And so, you know, each town does things a little differently, and you deserve the government, you know, that you want.
One more question, Bill. Can I ask one more question?
Oh, you had another question?
One more question. Do you have town meeting in Salisbury?
Yes.
And does it, how does it work? I mean, we have town meeting here, I think you're aware of that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I've got some, you know, mixed opinions about it, we have trouble getting 100 people to show up, and so, we have to wait around and flag them down, so. Is that an effective form of government in this day and age?
Well, you know, I, you know, it's definitely one that's steeped in tradition, goes back, I think, to the founding of this country. But in Wellesley, for example, they had a representative town meeting. And, because we have the same problem you have in Salisbury, especially with... especially with, um, our special town meetings, or our fall town meetings, we call it.
We got one maybe coming up, right?
Yeah, and, um, we've had to send out, um, messages during, when we're trying to open town meeting, to get people to show up. So you have people who did show up, who are calling others to, to come, so that way we can conduct the meeting. So, in, in Wellesley, they had a representative, um, town meeting, and, and that had its benefits. You never had this, you never had a quorum problem. Um, the people who were, uh, elected to those positions, um, were, you know, that's kind of the, the thing they did every year, so those, they're more likely to show up. And when you have a representative for a time, you know exactly who they are, so you can send out the warrant and any additional information ahead of time, and so that they can call and ask questions. So it was, um, there's a lot of benefits to that.
People were representative.
Oh, man, um, I wanna say a couple hundred, but I don't quite remember.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Uh, Bill, do you have anything?
Oh, sure, I got a whole bunch. How many, how many employees in, in Salisbury?
Um, well, benefited, we have about seventy-five, but then you include the part-timers, you're in, you're in the eighties.
And what's the annual budget in, um, Salisbury?
Uh, we're up to, 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 I'm gonna say, uh, I think it was sixty million dollars.
And what's the population around, roughly?
Uh, twenty-twenty census, we were, I think, ninety-one hundred, ninety-two hundred?
Now, as far as, uh, regional school experience, you understand we have a regional school here?
Yep, Pennsyl.
What's your experience with dealing with a regional school, um, where all the members of the school committee are not from the same town?
Yeah, I mean, so we have that in Salisbury. Um, we're part of the Triton Regional School District. Um, our superintendent, Brian Ford, actually lives here. I think I mentioned that. Um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, uh, that's tough. I mean, you have your, you have your representatives, but, um, you know, they, they're, you know, very school-minded, school-focused. I think it's important when dealing with a regional school district to, um, build a relationship with, um, the superintendent, who can, you know, you can work with them on the budget and how, you know, they're interacting with the school committee. Um, they can, you know, you can work with them, but they can also prepare you for things. Um, one of the first things I did when I got, got to Salisbury was reach out to him. Uh, he was pleasantly surprised, um, you know, he didn't realize Neil had, um, an assistant before. Uh, so, uh, it was a, it was a meeting, he was very happy to meet me, and, um, you know, we, we've had a good relationship since. Um, he's been coming to our, we're trying to set up a joint purchasing arrangement for health insurance, and he's, um, been interested in that, so he's been coming to those meetings. So, but back to your question, um, I do think that, um, you need to keep an open line between you and, and the superintendent, and, um, you know, I don't know what your relationship is with those, uh, members that are from Groveland, but, um, I think it's important to keep lines open with them as well. And, uh, it doesn't hurt to also, you know, have good relationships with the other two towns that are, um, in the district, because, um, together, you, I think if you have the right coalition, you can, uh, kinda work with the, the school system a little easier, and, um, you might, you might get a, a budget that is, you know, very fair to all, that way.
I know Brian very well. Heck, I'm a nice guy.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You deal, right now, have you ever had experience with the municipal electric company? That's what we have here in, in town, as opposed to National Grid or Ever Source, or one of these conglomerates that you can never get hold of?
I do, actually. Wellesley had a municipal light plant as well. Um, you know, they're very nice to us, they were very efficient, they, uh, really benefited the ratepayers, um, to have that there. They had a really top-notch staff, and they even made what, what Wellesley called a pilot payment of a million dollars each year to the town. And so, um, they ran, they ran it well, they, they donated, they, they gave that pilot payment, and, um, so, so we, we sort of had, we, you know, we kept in touch. We knew where the director was, number two was their accountant, we worked with a lot. Um, but they were, you know, they were left to, um, essentially run their own, um, you know, business organization, enterprise, um, because they were doing such a good job.
What was it, what was the annual budget in, in Wellesley, roughly?
Uh, that, when I was there, it was a hundred forty million, uh, but it's a lot more now.
I bet it is. Speaking of that, uh, Groveland has about one-third of the annual budget that you have in Salisbury. And unlike Salisbury, um, which seems to have business from the adult entertainment all the way to recreational marijuana, you're not gonna find any of that in Groveland, um, far from it. How, what would your plan be, um, to bring that, to bring businesses into Groveland, but leave that, uh, more kinda seedy stuff in, in Salisbury where it belongs?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Don't know what to say. I mean, let's, you know, you call it what it is.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And puberty, too.
So, uh, you know, I, I think, again, it's important to, to reach out to the community and see what they want, um, but then I think a good town administrator keeps his ear to the ground. You know, if, if I were, again, lucky enough to, to get this position, um, it'd be important to me to understand and meet, uh, understand who the, the contractors are and the business people are in the area, so that, um, you know, I could maybe hear this and that about what they're building and what the, what businesses are thinking about moving to, that way. And, and I would also need to know, um, certain areas in town that are ripe for development. That way, I can put those two pieces together, that I hear that this business owner is planning to do this, and I know that we have this parcel land that would be good for them, and then it's a good idea to reach out to them. Again, and that's if, that's the type of business that the, the town wants, so I won't be reaching out to any seedy, um, enterprises to come here.
That's good. Good to know.
Um, I think I've had a little, little enough of that in Salisbury.
Great.
So, um, you know, I, I don't wanna name any, uh, towns, but I do, I do, there's this example that always comes to mind of a few years ago, where there was this, um, uh, uh, call it a, um, hospital system, um, in an area of the state, and, um, they were trying to build a new building within the town that they were in, um, but the deal didn't work out. The neighboring, uh, town manager heard this, approached them and said, hey, why don't you come right across the border? I got this piece of land right here, you know, five minutes from the border, seven minutes from one of your locations, come check it out. And lo and behold, sometime later, they built this big, beautiful, um, medical building there. And so, um, you know, that's an example of, uh, a town manager or administrator, uh, being proactive and keeping his ear to the ground. And so, um, I, I guess that's how I would run things.
Yeah, and I imagine that great big medical building brought all kinds of unwanted traffic and congestion.
That's a good thought, uh, but it, but it actually was in, I mean, it couldn't be in a more perfect place. Um, you know, I, I go there now and then, um, and the traffic has not seen any different. They, they have a big parking lot, and there was always, um, they put in a light there, 'cause there's a stop sign there, and they put in a light there. And, um, it's a, it's a T intersection, and traffic flows very smoothly. You'd be, you'd be surprised. I would've, I maybe would've thought the same thing, but no, never.
Great. Can you quickly address some of the gaps in your employment history?
Sure. Uh, um, sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Um, are you talking about after my private sector job?
Um, yeah, after you left Resident Control, it, it was a five-month gap, basically, um, before you joined, uh, Foxborough, um, which didn't last very long.
That, that was, oh, oh, okay, so after Foxborough, um, yeah, that, that, um, that, that internship ended early, and, um, and so I was looking for work after that. So I, so I took, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not the most, you know, risk-taking guy in the world. I like to be a little more calculated, but I left my private sector job to pursue my career, and so I took a, essentially, an unpaid internship, and, uh, you know, saved up for it, took that unpaid internship, made that leap, and so that gap was me trying to get my career off the ground. And I did. I landed a great job after that in Wellesley.
Okay, uh, just one more thing. I see from your references that, um, you're familiar with, uh, a, a former intern, uh, interim finance director, Mr. Pecos. Tremendously knowledgeable man, uh, great resource. I see you've used him in the past as a resource. Do you see yourself benefiting from that, um, relationship and, and using, uh, um, that resource in the future as a, as a sounding board, so to say?
I mean, um, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm my own person when it comes to making decisions, but, um, you know, I'm not so hubristic to think that I'm perfect. I can't learn more. There's so much to learn. I'm a, I'm a lifelong learner, so I'm willing to learn and listen from, uh, to anyone who might, you know, add value, uh, to my, to my skill set. So, uh, yes, there's him. He's a forty-year guy in the profession. Uh, there's Cheryl Strutter, who's, um, getting closer to retirement, so she's around thirty years in finance director. Neil Harrington, uh, was mayor of Salem, and, um, been in, uh, Salisbury for almost twenty years. So, you know, all these people have added to my repertoire, and I'm not, you know, afraid of reaching out and using them or anyone else, um, if it means that I can do a better job here for all of you.
Uh, I'm in your camp. I'm a lifelong learner, too. I, I try to learn something every day, just to, uh, keep from becoming intellectually impotent, is what I call it. Uh, thank you. I appreciate all your answers and your honesty.
Thank you for the question.
And thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you for having me.
Jason?
My pleasure.
I have, uh, two questions that are probably not really related, but what's the name of your dog? He's about five months old, and what kind of dog is it?
Oh, I love that question. Um, he is a golden doodle, uh, so he's the perfect, perfect specimen, and his name is Ichigo. It's Japanese.
Ichigo?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I, I didn't recognize you when you came in. I spend a tremendous amount of time at the dog park, and, uh, I thought maybe we would've run into each other down there, but...
Well, actually, it's funny, 'cause I, I ran into someone who said that you do spend a lot of time there, and, um, he said, if you, if you, if you visit there enough, you will run into Jason. So our dogs can be friends sometime, I hope.
Oh, I'm sure they will be. Um, but I do have a question. Uh, you had mentioned that you put together the reports of some of the department heads that aren't quite as adept in doing their budgets. Um, what steps do you take to maybe help them grow and become more adept at doing those budgets?
Well, I mean, I always, anything I'm doing, I always show them, um, because if they're, if they're like me, they want, they want to learn. Um, so I always take the steps to show them what I'm doing, like, you know, this is, this is how you format this, this is how you, you know, do this equation, um, and stuff like that. So, and then another, another thing I do is I, I will, you know, after I've shown them enough, I'll have them physically do it. So I walk them through it, and, uh, but I'll have them physically type into the spreadsheet, um, you know, do the equation. I'll walk them through, but I'll have them type it, 'cause, you know, writing is one thing, but doing it also helps you learn, helps you cement it. Um, you know, back when I was sending, um, you know, budget reports, um, I would, I would, I would walk them through what it means and, and clarify any questions with them, and if they had any questions about something, or I could see a, a recurring theme of them, you know, not keeping track of, let's say, their invoices, I would say, uh, you know, this would be easier for you to understand and, and help you, you know, go faster if, uh, you know, maybe you kept a list of, of all the things you paid and, you know, saved it. So, two different methods like that. Try and, you know, teach people verbally, uh, show them how to do it, so they can see it visually, and then, uh, have them physically do it, so they get that kind of touch learning as well.
Perfect. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Um, yes, hi. Take my mask off finally. So, you finished your degree, um, just December two thousand thirteen, right? So before that, you were interning. That's what that gap was? That was an intern in Foxborough, and then there was a gap
Yep.
from then till December, and then you secured the job in Wellesley?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Um, and it says, and your references are good, it says that you are very calm, which is good. Um, you handle, um, conflict well, um, you're very technology savvy, which is good. Um, but it also says, when you don't know something, um, you check to find out how other towns are handling an issue or process. Could you give me an example specifically of a time when you did that, and the towns that you contacted about a process?
Oh, that's a good question. Um, hmm.
It can be in general terms. I know it's like nine o'clock at night, so. No, I'm with you. I mean, I'm lucky I can remember to ask a question, so. Please don't feel like you have to tell me something verbatim. I'm not gonna quote you.
Yeah, I'd love to give you a, a specific example.
General would be fine.
Yeah, it hap- it happens all the time. I mean, you know, if, if I'm looking to see, um, what, oh, well, all right, here's one. Um, we've had to hire a couple assistant library directors, because, um, we've hired really top-tier assistant library directors, and when you're top-tier like that, you tend to be ambitious, and they've gone on to be, um, uh, direct, well, one of them went on to be a director, and the other one got poached by none other than my old stomping ground Wellesley, and so she went to be their assistant library director, which was a step up. It's a much bigger library. Um, and so, uh, on a couple of occasions, um, I've reached out to other towns to see how they were handling their interviews or questions they were asking. Um, because, you know, I'm not an expert in that area, um, and I, you know, wanted to see, um, you know, what, what should be asked. How am I, how do, how am I gonna figure out that this person is going to handle the day-to-day functions of a library while also managing the staff that's there? And we have a lot of senior staff there, too. They've been there for a long time, so it's very important that the person comes in knows how to approach that type of staff. Um, and so, because that's the type of profession that I'm a little less versed in, um, that, you know, it's important to me to get that right. And so, you know, I reached out to my contacts and, you know, put together what, what questions I thought were really good. There's a lot of common questions, so that was easy, and then I threw in some that I thought were pretty good as well. So that's, that's one, that's one example.
Good. Um, so obviously, you're working side-by-side with a, a town manager in Salisbury, um, for about three years now?
Yeah, four now, yep, just past my...
Or three, four years?
Yeah.
You've been learning a lot and getting some, some frontline experience. Um, can you, can you men, talk about a problem with the budget when something went sideways, and what did you do?
Yeah, um, well, there's a few, um, you know, a, a police department, they have a, um, building that's only a couple of years old. You know, really great that the town's able to do that. However, everything, everything in Salisbury costs more to build because the water table is so high. And so there are such strange things that happen, and one of them was that sediment was getting into the pipes that fed, I think, the, the toilets in the, in the cells. And so, there are very strict regulations around that, and so we, we had to mitigate that. Um, and so, um, you know, luckily, um, due to decent planning, we had a, we had a decent free cash number, and so we were able to hold on until the fall town meeting, uh, to which we then appropriated money to, to fix that, so that we could, you know, stay legally compliant, 'cause our police station is a, is an accredited, uh, police station, and so we don't wanna jeopardize that at all. So, um, yeah, that was, that was one time we had, and of course, you know, um, each year, you know, is, is a little bit of a struggle. You know, our, our school budget goes up by a lot, our assessment goes up, so not only does the budget go up, but the assessment goes up, because Salisbury keeps having student population that grows, or some of the other towns. I think one town stayed the same, the other one decreased. So we're getting whacked on two ends. Uh, and so it's, it's always a struggle to, um, kind of, kind of fill that gap, and so what we, what we've been doing over the last couple of years is, um, you know, we, we establish a budget, but then, um, we see how things are going at the fall town meeting. Uh, we will appropriate from free cash, um, whenever we need to fill gaps or pay for certain things like that. So, um, you know, we kind of have to be flexible, and we kind of think on our toes, and, you know, we, we do different initiatives throughout the year, so, um, you know, staying on top of, uh, past due taxes has been helpful, so we've, we foreclosed on a building last year that we eventually sold off and made a good chunk of money from, and that helped us in the fall of last year, uh, when that happened. So, it was a year before, and then helped us in the following fall. Um, so things like that can, can help keep you afloat, as long as you're, you know, keeping on top of things as time goes on.
Okay, and what do you think you enjoy, um, the most about working in a municipal environment? And don't say the pay, because it's, you spend more hours than you'll ever get paid as you move up. I've seen it all.
Um, you know, it's, um, you, you don't expect to be thanked or anything for, you know, you do this because you have a passion for it. Uh, but one time, a lady did, did send me a thank you card, because I think she had a, she didn't know that we purchased the streetlights. We advertise, but, you know, people, you know, go to work, they don't know. Uh, and so, National Grid, she was calling National Grid for like six, seven, eight months, and they wouldn't replace her light. Then finally, after many months of calling, they, someone finally told her the town owns the lights. So she called me, uh, within a couple of weeks, that light was replaced, and she actually wrote me a thank you note, and I actually saved that, because, um, it meant so much to me, yeah. So I think, I think work with the people like that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yosa?
Yep.
I think it's important, uh, community involvement with, uh, employees. When, when you're in Wellesley and, and Salisbury, did you, uh, were you involved in the community, uh, community events that they, that they were holding?
Uh, more, more so Salisbury, um, you know, I think, so there have been, um, they brought back this, this big event called Salisbury Days. Uh, you know, it's, it's something I look forward to getting to, however, the, the weekends, the timing just never worked out.
Last weekend?
Yes, that's right.
Last weekend?
Yes, that's right. And, and, um, I was here, actually, part of that weekend. So, um, but where I have gotten involved was, um, in our council and aging. They have events all the time. And, um, early on, when I started, she had commented that, you know, no one from the administration comes. I said, "Well, I would love to come and see, you know, various events." And they had this big, uh, event where they had different, um, vendors and health insurance companies come, things that were relevant to seniors. Uh, and that was a great event. They had games and prizes and like all these, uh, different, you know, organizations that, that help seniors. And so, um, you know, and I've also, um, they do a Meals, Meals on Wheels, um, program where, you know, we have a part-time van driver. And, um, I think once, uh, once a week, they, they take this food, they put it on the, the van, and they drive it around to people in town who have signed up. And, uh, one day, I, I did that with them. I got on the van. Uh, it took most of the day. We went around, all, all around Salisbury. I even saw some, you know, backgrounds I haven't seen before. Uh, and it was a good way to, you know, kind of get out into the community and, um, you know, meet people and do something different and, and kind of, you know, do something that really helped a lot of people. Um, so I've gotten involved with council and aging events, and I did the Meals on Wheels thing. Um, I've developed such a relationship with the council and aging director. She, um, actually watches my puppy sometimes for me now.
I won't, I won't embarrass you when asking how many, uh, events you lost to the senior citizens. I won't, I won't ask you. Don't answer it.
Well, 'cause I'm not, I'm not dumb enough to compete against them.
Oh, okay. Good answer. Uh, the, uh, the JPA, uh, with the, uh, town and with the school, uh, was that a big savings in insurance?
Oh, so just to be clear, that hasn't gotten off the ground yet.
Oh.
So, we were trying to do a lot last year, and so we knew the timing would be tight, and especially with the pandemic still kind of raging. Um, we went for it, but there just wasn't enough time to get it together. Like, really, what, what people kept saying was, you know, "I'm just so busy." Um, you know, "Pandemic's got me doing this, that, and the other thing." And, um, so we, we weren't able to get off the ground. So we've, we've just now restarted those talks, so we have more time to get it set up. And we're engaging several towns along with the, the school district. So, 'cause there was interest. It just wasn't enough time to bring it to their unions, to their board, to get it all together. But just that, just that, um, act alone got out into the health insurance market and, and, um, you know, I don't wanna mention any towns by names, but some of the towns that were involved in this, um, saw massive, uh, premium discounts from Maya because they knew we were involved in it. Um, so just the act of that alone scared a big health insurance provider into, into giving a discounted rate to, to some of these towns. So I can't imagine what, um, what actually doing it might cause.
Um, obviously better than the GIC that, uh, we're involved in here.
Yeah. Well, the problem with, uh, things like the GIC and Maya, I mean, Maya actually has a really good model, but both of them still have one problem of they just accept kind of any towns into it. And so you have this thing called, um, geographic bias in, in health insurance, where if you're in a region where, where we are, up, um, you know, north of Boston, our health insurance costs are, you know, X. They're a certain amount. If you get clo, if you go down to the, you know, the four, uh, the, the ninety-five, I think they call it the four ninety-five curve, and you're getting closer to Boston, ninety-five curve, closer to Boston, those, uh, insurance expenses are much more. And so when you're in these groups like Maya and the GIC, they're taking those types of towns. So these more expensive towns are being subsidized by less expensive towns like Groveland. So if you get into a regional GPA, you get all the same benefits of that, but you also get the geographic bias in your favor.
You've done your homework on that. Um, when you were looking at that, um, did, did you also look into, um, the Medicare buy-in for, uh, some of the retired, um, town employees?
Yes, that's a very good question, and we did. Um, we only have, uh, I think we identified two. And so this year, we'll be moving, you know, toward the end of this year, when our renewal happens, we'll be moving to put, it's either one or two of them on, uh, into this program, 'cause that saves the town a lot of money also. So, yeah, we did, we did look into that, and we did, we did identify one or two seniors that would be eligible for that.
Because it should be approximately nineteen eighty-five, eighty-six?
Yeah, it was, yeah, in the eighties, um, that, that, that changed. And so there's kind of that loophole where, you have to forgive me, I'm a little rusty on this technical piece of it, but, uh, there's that loophole where they weren't required to pay into it. And so they're stuck on our, um, active plan insurance. But now you can, you know, if the town pays the difference, it actually saves you a bunch of money.
Yeah, some, uh, some of them have done that. Uh, I don't know, I don't know exactly how many we have here in, in Groveland. Uh, thank you. Uh, do you, uh, do you, uh, at times represent the town, um, manager at selectmen's meetings?
Uh, yeah. Um, when I was doing this streetlight retrofit, I, I, um, went to see them multiple times to, to give them an update on that project. Um, and then recently, trying to remember what the issue was. Um, recently, I did it again. I'm just kind of blanking on what, what, what it was. Oh, we were talking about the JPA. That was a few months ago. So we were talking about the JPA, and we introduced that idea to them. And so I, I went there and, you know, represented him in that, in that manner, yes.
Now, uh, so, uh, in the four years you've been down in Salisbury and, and Indian Wellesley, did you, did you attend, did you attend the town meetings?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Wellesley had what we called a marathon meeting. Um, again, they had a, they had an elected, um, group, and so, uh, they, 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 they have quite a setup down there. And I respect it, uh, 'cause it's very thorough. But every, pretty much every board and commission has like a big presentation they give, so their meetings run multiple nights. Um, again, I give Cheryl Strutter praise because she didn't make me go to every night, but we went to, I went to at least the first couple, um, every, every single year. Same thing with Salisbury. Um, he hasn't required, 'cause of COVID, we haven't, he hasn't required we go for, for a couple of town meetings, 'cause they're trying to keep it, you know, as small as possible. But typically, we, all the department heads go.
Um, have you, uh, especially in Salisbury, uh, it probably wouldn't apply in Wellesley, but in Salisbury, have, have you looked into electronic voting at the town meeting?
I actually think Wellesley did, but, um, we never, I haven't personally looked into it, no. But I think, I think Wellesley was thinking about it. But, um, but no, I have not personally done it.
Oh, okay. And, 'cause I, I think Newbury has it.
Oh, that does ring a bell, actually. I think I saw a news article about that. I know Tracy Blaze well, so I could find out.
Okay. Um, and, and, um, just the last question. Uh, the, the streetlights.
Yes.
Who, who does the maintenance on them? If a, if a, uh, motor vehicle crash takes a pole down, who, who does the, uh, who resets the pole and puts the, uh, uh, streetlight back up?
So, good question. National Grid, um, would be responsible for the pole. In our case, you can buy the poles, but, um, you know, it's a pain to do that. And there's a connection issue. Like, if you buy the poles, you get a, um, you're responsible for a lot more. So it wasn't, wasn't, we didn't think it was smart for us to buy the poles. So if the pole comes down, National Grid has to replace the pole, but we would have to, uh, replace the Cobra head on top. And so we, we, we contracted out with a vendor named Degel Electric, who, um, comes up and would do that for us if need be. And of course, we keep, um, we keep a few spares on hand in the event that that does happen. 'Cause I actually think it did happen, um, shortly after we bought the lights. It's not something that happens too often, but, you know, I, I, I always feel like if you can think it, it's gonna happen. And so we bought a few spares, and sure enough, after we bought the lights, a pole came down, smashed the light. And so National Grid put back up the pole, and, uh, we put back up the light.
I don't know if it's still in effect, but when I, when I dealt with, with something like this, uh, I, I learned that if you contracted with a municipal electric company, you didn't have to go out to bid by law?
Uh-
Did you look into that?
I, I think you might be right, but I think we didn't do that because their price points were higher than the private sector.
Okay, all right. Uh, I don't, I don't have anything else. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Anybody got any, uh, follow-up?
I do.
Go ahead, Dan.
Um, you, most, it seems like most of your experience is on, uh, working with Neil Harrington?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I think that's the most relevant experience. Um, you know, I, I mean, I worked with, uh, all those department heads in, in Wellesley, so they had an executive director, Hans Larson. He was great. Uh, and of course, uh, my boss, Cheryl. Um, but I think the most relevant, it's all relevant, but I, you know, I think I probably hammer home what I've done with Neil the most.
Years ago, he was mayor of Salem?
That's right.
Yeah, I lived there when he was mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
Yusevich knocked him out, but-
Did you vote him out?
No, no, no. I was for him. It got worse when he left, uh, for whatever that's worth. I mean, if you like traffic, I mean, it's, uh, yeah, I moved, 'cause, uh, just, it's a city now.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, you know, and I lived in Drake it. Uh, where, where'd you live in Drake it?
Uh, Baldwin Road off of Arlington, which is off of Broadway.
All right.
You know Broadway, right, where the, um, you're a lot of business?
Thirty-eight. Them drag coming in?
Yeah. So, uh, Arlington and then one of the side streets, um, down Arlington. Toward, toward, toward Burgess Farm. Not that road, but toward that way.
You seem very technically proficient from what I'm listening to. You're-
Thank you.
Analytical. Study things.
Yeah.
Um, is your style similar to Neil Harrington's? Or dissimilar?
Um, that's an interesting question.
He's vocal. I've read a little bit about, uh, what's going on there in, uh, Salisbury.
I mean, he's, yeah, he's pretty laid back. Um, you know, I, um, felt like, you know, I absorbed his, um, his demeanor a bit. Um, I don't know. Am I like Neil Harrington? I don't know. I, I feel like over the years, I've kind of taken from all these professionals and ma, and made it, you know, made it my own, kinda.
Your own person.
Yeah.
All right. Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else got anything? Uh, do you have any questions for us?
Well, I, I know it's very late. I don't wanna keep you all-
What is it?
I'll stay on, man. Don't worry about that.
Don't worry about that.
Get some coffee.
Yeah. Uh, well, I mean, uh, now that, now that the interview's come to an end, and I can't use this to my advantage, um, I, you know, I would be interested to know what, what you all think makes a good town administrator and what, what you're looking for. Now, obviously, we can have this conversation, uh, you know, another day, but, um, it'd benefit me to know, you know, in summary, what you think.
Uh, one thing you, you mentioned in, uh, in your statement, you mentioned that, that department head meetings. Uh, how about employee meetings? That, that would be important for me.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm more than happy to. Like, like I said, I've, I've built a relationship with every admin, librarian, police officer, firefighter, um, you know, in, in the town of, uh, Salisbury. Yeah, that would be kind of cool, uh, to have, to have just a staff meeting, um, to see what their thoughts are and how they think things are going. Um, you know, you know, in time, they're all gonna, you know, my door, I, you know, it's an open-door policy. They can come talk to me whenever they want, but over time, I will be, you know, reaching out to them, 'cause I wanna hear from everybody.
Kathy, can you answer the question?
Um, sure. So, I've been one of the strongest supporters of bringing this position to the town, Dan. So, friendly adversary. We get along better now than we used to. Right?
It's a work in progress.
A work in progress. Um, so, so when I think about it, I think back to, you know, what prompted us to get a financial director? And prompted us because we had the missing money saga, and the state had to come in, and nobody took it. Um, we just had an elected treasurer who didn't know how to reconcile. And we had an accountant who was good. And then we had a tax colle, a collector who was appointed and a town clerk who was elected. And the collector and clerk were one in the same. It was interesting. Um, and that was when I first came to the town and I joined the finance committee, 'cause the whole committee quit. I thought, "That's not good." And, uh, so, working with some of the people that had lived here longer than myself, um, we pushed hard to get a finance director in. Um, the first one we hired went out on disability in two weeks. But the story gets better. We finally got someone who stayed. And I watched that position grow. We went from the Tom Moses to the Greg LeBrecq, to the Denise Demkowsky. And what kept happening is that we started piling in more and more administration, because we're not here. So for me, the most important task of the town administrator would be to keep the board of selectmen in the loop. All of us. Transparency, communication. Um, because we can't have us sitting here doing one thing and then everything else going on all week that we don't even know about. Um, so, to me, that's the biggest thing. And we were heaping too much on a financial director. We had to make this leap. Um, and I believe it's going to work. I mean, I was not a fan of bringing in a director of planning, and we brought one in, and she saved her salary three times over already. So now I understand that we do have to grow our town government a little bit in response to the growth in the town. I can see it. You know, we, we can't manage the town Monday nights. So we need someone who comes to us and gives us options, gives us information, and allows us to do the job that we're elected to do, but with better, with information and advice. That's what I'm looking for.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I think you stumped the board. They weren't expecting to have to answer questions.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean, uh-
Go ahead, Bill. You got anything?
Yeah. I'm gonna sum it up in three words. What I look for in every individual that I hire and the, every individual I meet, I look for honesty, because I can't make good decisions based on lies. I look for integrity, someone that's not gonna compromise their principles or their values for anything or anyone. And I look for trust. I wanna be able to trust that individual. I hired them. I wanna trust them to do their job with minimal interference. So those are the three key words that I look for in hiring a TA, uh, a, a dog walker, uh, anything. Um, those are my three things. And if, if you can, um, live by those three words, we'll get along great. If you can't, we're probably not gonna get along at all.
Hmm, okay. Easy. Done.
Jason, you got anything?
Yeah, I think, uh, when I think about a town administrator, I think you summed it up in terms of putting together the vision of what the board has, because we're supposed to be in contact with the people, and we're supposed to bring what the people want forward. Um, and to have somebody that can actually facilitate that, as well as take care of the day-to-day business and bring that back to us, like Kathy said, in terms of information for the board to help us make decisions, and also guide us, provide us with some guidance on the, the rules and regulations that we might not be so up to date on. I think that's a, another important aspect of what I would expect from the town administrator, 'cause I know previous roles did that a lot for the town, the select board. Um, and, uh, building not only the relationships among the different departments. I know in the past, that's been lacking. I know recently, with the, thanks to our planning, our economic development and planning director, that's improved immensely. But also reaching out to other towns. I think that's huge. And, uh, bringing some of the boards together, which is something that I don't think has really happened here within Groveland. I know I spend a lot of time at other board meetings, and there's been a lot of conflict. And so some of that being resolved between the, the different boards, I think is, uh, another key role that, uh, somebody in your position would be able to facilitate well.
Uh, yes, yep. Okay.
Dan, anything?
Yeah. Um, they say around a TA, I thought we were good and not big enough yet, and maybe we'd need a TA down the road. Um, you know, I hope, uh, you know, and again, people voted, and, uh, so it's going forward. So, uh, you know, I'll make a lemonade out of lemons if I can. Hopefully, you know how to lemon, and if you come in here, you'll be outstanding. But I hope that the town administrator that comes in here is a really rock-solid financial person. Um, I'm hoping, you know, like you said, that, you know, and I appreciate you saying it, that if, if we want your opinion, you'll give it to us. But I also, I would like you to give us an opinion, even if we don't want it. Um, I've looked at things, and I've seen, uh, uh, financial disasters that nobody even brings up. Uh, many towns opened up the, uh, uh, you know, let in a few school choice kids. They sprinkle it and fill in gaps within, within the classrooms. Uh, Petucket opened the floodgates. We had a hundred and forty-something kids. Many of them are from Haverhill, not to knock Haverhill. I mean, you do what's best for you and your family, and if you set them across the river, I understand, we got five thousand a kid, but it cost us twelve, thirteen, fourteen. So we lose eight, seven, eight thousand a kid, and we make it up on volume. Those are the financial geniuses we've had over the last fifteen, sixteen years I've lived in town since I moved here, uh, from Salem. So I'm hoping that whoever comes in and takes that position says, "Hey, that's a bad idea. That's gonna cost us a fortune." Yeah, you might wanna bring in, you know, another, you know, like from Salem, they knocked down Pocket Brothers. Next thing you know, there's hundreds of apartments and condominiums. They went ballistic on building. Well, you, I, I believe in slow, sustainable growth, incremental growth. You can't, you know, you're not gonna go zero to sixty in three seconds unless you got a Ferrari. We don't have a Ferrari. So I need somebody that, you know, will act as a brake for the town and say, "Like you've mentioned, your heart's in the place on forty B, but don't let your heart make all the decisions, 'cause you're, you, you, you know." I, I, I say, you know, "Your eyes are bigger than your wallet," you know? So, you know, and I, I'm political. I make some comments, and I offend a few people, you know? I talk about moon bats and lefty liberals and whatnots. But, you know, people want everything, you know? They want dog parks. You know, I call it doggy Disney world. And we want all of these things. But I'm looking at my tax bill. It doubled since I've been here. It's gonna be like ten grand when the high school comes on board us. You know, it's gonna be, you know, probably twelve grand, thousand a month. It's gonna be more than my mortgage. So I feel like I, you know, I'll pay rent to the town for the rest of my life. So I want somebody to just act as a buffer to the board- So, I want somebody to just act as a buffer to the board and just say, yeah, but, and, you know, I hope you got the backbone, because, you know, in my life, a lot of people, you know, get along, you know, they go along to get along and it's a safer position as a TA to keep your job, make everyone happy, and you can't do the right thing and have integrity if all you do is become a yes man. So, I'm hoping, you know, if, you know, we get to that step and you're the guy, you're not a yes man.
I'll give you my opinion, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're all set.
Okay, yeah, you know, before I go, I did, I did have something for you, I did, um...
Brought an apple for the teacher, did you?
Yeah, I brought an apple for the teacher, oh, yeah. Sorry, I brought you some homework, not to make more work for you, but I did bring you a, I did create a, some, a document that has a bunch of my work products in it and some information I have that I've researched on the town and, you know, I think ways that I can be helpful, so if you allow me, I'll just hand these out real quick.
No digital copy?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what Neil had left?
No, that's what CBS had. So, with that, I just want to, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come in, I was just honored to come in. Just know that if you choose to go in a different direction, you've made a municipal friend in me, so I hope you or whoever you hire ends up reaching out to me, especially if we're doing something in Salisbury that you find interesting. But selfishly, more than that, I hope it is me you choose to move forward with. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have to read the report.
Well, you did some work. We can, we can discuss the candidates if you wish. What's your pleasure? Anybody?
Yes, let's discuss. We sat here through all these interviews, that's what we did it for, right?
Yeah.
Got to make a decision sometime.
You know, unless you, unless you want to put it off to a, an earlier, an earlier night, doesn't matter, we got, we got time if anybody's willing to stay. You want to start it off, Kathy?
Well, I guess, you know, to your point, Chairman Watson, it's late hour, I'm not sure how much discussion the board is going to need at this point. I don't know if the members feel that they need more time to figure this out or not. I'm prepared to discuss briefly, I think can make a decision if that's the intentions of the other board members, but if that's not, if the intention is just to discuss and discuss and discuss, then, you know, I mean, are we trying to make a decision tonight or not? I guess I'm asking you guys to be a little transparent, are we going to try to make a decision tonight or not? Let's be upfront about this.
Well, do you think it would be beneficial to take some time, absorb everything and discuss it later?
Bill, what's your feelings?
I personally would like a little time to reflect and digest on the last three and a half hours of my life, so that I do not make rash, uninformed decisions at a late hour when I may be a little tired and not as clear-thinking as I might be.
And there's nothing that said that we can't bring, if we have questions for other questions, follow, we can bring the two candidates back if we need to. Dan, what's your feeling?
I was impressed with both of them. I have my own personal opinions on style and weighing certain strengths versus others. And, you know, this kid, I think he hit it out of the park. Call him a kid, he's probably two years younger than me, but I just think he's technically proficient, I'm just impressed with his articulation of what he has for experience, and that's not taking anything away from the other candidate, it's just, he seems like a guy that does his homework, knows what he's talking about. So, again, that's my, you know, my first, you know, that's my cursory, my cursory examination of it. I respect Bill O'Neill next to me, and if he wants to sleep on it, then I think we should sleep on it. I wouldn't mind, you know, if it's permitted under the law, get some feedback from some residents, what do you think? Anybody watching, can we do that?
Well, can we post this?
Are we allowed to do that?
Yes, we can post these on our town website.
So, I wouldn't mind hearing, you know, what other people's, you know, ears and eyes are thinking on this matter and...
Post this on the town website.
Even though it's our decision, I just...
I need a motion?
You know?
That, that sounds reasonable. Jason, you have something?
We could deliberate till Monday, I mean, we've got a meeting Monday, it's not like we're going to sit on this for two weeks.
Monday's just been stretching.
Yeah, I move that we post the resumes, references and all of the related material on the website so that everyone can see what we saw.
Post it.
And we got, what, Groveland Day, what?
Groveland Day, you have the 5K race on Saturday, on Friday night, and Groveland Day is on Saturday.
I mean, you know, I've never done this before, is it okay to, you know, talk to people and say, hey, what do you think? I mean, did you listen?
Most cases, yeah, but in your case, I would say, no.
I shouldn't talk to everyone? Go to the big event on Friday, have a...
I don't see, I don't see the reason, I don't see why we couldn't hold off, that they get their feelings, post it.
To your point...
No, I'm just listening.
I'm looking at the amount of experience that Christine has as an actual, like, assistant town manager, and it's twice as many years, twice as much experience, and twice as many references that say that she is more than ready to take on this job, and that's something that I'm going to think on. He's bright, talented, but she knows exactly what she's doing and how to do it, and there's no question about it in my mind.
Seniority's not the end-all.
Not seniority, experience and the references, read them.
Kid's smart.
Read the references.
Listen to what I heard.
Well, read the references.
So, you want to, you want to sleep on it?
Can I comment since I'm here?
Is this on the two candidates?
Yep.
Well, I don't know, this is for our discussion with an interview on the candidates. You were on the committee, so you asked questions there. Yeah, as long as it's not going to take too long, sure. I want you to introduce yourselves so everybody knows who you are.
Yeah, my name is Ruth Revard, I live at Sixberrywood Lane. I grew up in Groveland, I left, did my thing, went to school, all that. I've now returned, I've lived in town for twenty-one years, I've been on the finance board for five years, I've chaired it the last two years. I was heavily involved with the Government Study Committee when they asked me to be, and I sat on the search committee, so, and I sat through this meeting tonight, I watch every Board of Selectmen meeting, so I feel that I just represent a very informed, researched part of the population of the town. Through watching both of these candidates now, through two meetings, I will say, my opinions changed a little bit from our first round of interviews to our second round of interviews. To me, Christine Lindberg seems to have a much more well-rounded level of experience, and I think that that's something that the town really needs. Initially, the first round of interviews, I was really looking for somebody that had a lot of technology, had a lot of finance background, because I felt that that's what we needed. The more I thought about it, I've had the benefit to think about this now for several weeks, the more I thought about it, the more I really feel that we also need a very strong human resources component, we need personnel component, we need somebody that really has a broad range of experience, and I think that being on the Board of Selectmen for several terms, which is what Christine was, as well as the planning board, and worked for several different communities for a longer period of time, I do think that all of that adds up and all of that comes into play in a small town like ours. And so, from, from where I've sat from the beginning of this process until this point in time, I just thought that my opinion would be helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think, I think we should maybe schedule a meeting in, what, ten days? Or you want to go further than that to...
Why not Monday? We've got a meeting Monday.
We've got a meeting Monday, is that time enough to get feedback from people?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. So, you want, you want to put it on the agenda for, for the meeting coming up on Monday?
Unless someone else thinks it's a lot more time.
Anybody got any feelings on that?
Monday.
Monday?
Monday.
Kathy, okay, Jason? All right, well, we'll put it on the agenda for Monday, Monday's Selectmen meeting. And we can discuss them further and...
Will you take public comment, huh, of the people?
We just have public comment.
I mean, there might be a parade.
Well...
Who to hire?
Yeah, we could. Yeah, we don't need to.
We don't need to.
No.
Just thinking out loud.
Yeah, generally, if I may, I would advise against that.
Okay.
But, but you're welcome. You certainly should reach out into the community as individual board members. What I worry about, I'm thinking more, I'm putting on sort of a legal, even though I'm not an attorney, a legal counsel hat, you want to be careful that there's not, nothing said that produces any liabilities to the town.
I only say positive things. Can't get sued for saying good.
Yeah, I think it might be a circus.
Free-for-all, agreed.
So, the decision is always, give us the weekend to think about it, formulate some questions and a discussion on it, we'll get it on the agenda for the next meeting. Anything else?
Could we have it on the agenda at the beginning of the agenda so we're not back at like nine-thirty at night? I mean, these agendas have gotten like to be like a laundry list of things, and I think there's a lot on there that we could possibly push off or, you know what I'm saying?
I don't think there's much, the last conversation I had...
I'm just thinking of the agendas that I've seen, we've had a list this long that just keeps getting cut and pasted on the next agenda.
I thought when I spoke with Catherine that there wasn't too much on the agenda for the upcoming meeting, but I'll check with her again and we'll get it on, we'll put it in where we can.
Well, could we put it up front?
We're going to try to get it on, we'll put it in where we can, where we can fit it in. If we have, if we have something that, like an appointment, which is cut and dry, but if it's something that on there that might take a little bit longer, we'll, we'll fit it in where we can, in a most advantageous spot. So, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Actually, I'm going to second his motion to post those and encourage public feedback. I know my email is posted on the town website and I'm definitely open to getting any emails from...
Me too.
The residents. So, I'd like to make sure that we get that voted and posted as quickly as possible so all the residents have an opportunity to take a look at it and get back to us.
Get back to us.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to try to get that on, today going Tuesday, we should be able to get that on tomorrow, hopefully.
Well, can we vote it?
Catherine's still on? Do you know if she's still on?
Could Rebecca do it?
I believe Beth should be able to do it.
Oh, Beth. The town clerk could maybe do it for us.
See if we can get that on, is she on?
She's off, but she muted, so I can turn her off if you want.
Did we want to vote this?
What's that?
Do we want to vote that this gets posted tomorrow?
Yeah, just to solidify, I think you might be...
Okay, so I'll make a motion to post...
Before we vote to put it on tomorrow, we want to make sure if it's logistically possible to get it on there tomorrow.
Yeah, let's ask her, can we unmute her?
Why wouldn't it?
Why can't we get it on tomorrow? If she can't do it, the town clerk can do it.
We should have at least a backup.
You're going to put this on there too?
No, just the resumes, no, not this.
So, it should not be an issue at all.
No, it shouldn't, but let's just...
Courtesy.
To make sure.
Check it.
Yeah, I'm hearing.
Oh, you're there. Who is that?
That's Catherine.
Is that Rebecca?
Ms. Warden.
That's Catherine. Uh, can that, can, is it possible to get that on there tomorrow?
Sure, yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
This thing?
All right, we can get it on the website so everybody can take a look at it.
Yep, I'll post it right in the bulletin so that it's kind of front and center as soon as you open up the website.
Okay, go ahead. If I may, if I, what we could do is, I can send you an electronic version with the personal information redacted.
A name and phone number, thank you, yeah.
That'd be great, thank you. Do you have that email?
I quite sure I do, Kathy.
Can you, can you get that done tomorrow?
I'll get it, yeah, I'll get it done either tonight when I get home or tomorrow morning.
It'll be tomorrow.
Right now.
Rock, thank you. Okay, thank you.
When I get home, it'll be tomorrow morning anyway, so...
All right, that'll be taken care of, the motion to adjourn.
No, not yet. Yeah, I'd like to address Ms. Cashon Ellis's point. I don't think there's a more pressing issue right now in this town than, than getting this TA onboard, so I'd like to see that as the foremost agenda item on the agenda on Monday and not placed down so far that, you know, it becomes just non-efficient to do it at ten o'clock at night. If there's a more important issue, I'd like to know what it is, but I can't think of one at the moment.
Can't tell you that because I haven't gone over the agenda, but we're, I'll get it on, I'll get it on the agenda with Catherine at the most advantageous time that we can get it on, if we can get it on there early, we'll get it on there. It certainly won't be ten o'clock, but we'll, the agenda from my understanding isn't that long, but, so, we'll get it on, this is going to take some time, so we'll get it on there. We'll get it, we'll fit it in.
Then I'd like to formally make a motion that it's first on the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes. We should do the warrants first and all the easy stuff.
What's that again, couldn't you?
Should do all the easy stuff first and just get it out of the way, and let's just say I'm late five minutes, you know?
That's what I said.
I'll agree, I'll agree, warrants and appointments, and then after that, immediate discussion on...
Like in court, the judge get rid of the uncontested issues, you know, yes, yes, we're all in agreement, see you later, bye, you clear out half the courtroom, and then you take the people that want to fight for twenty minutes.
Do you want to make a friendly amendment? I'm good with that.
I'll make a friendly amendment, within fifteen minutes of the start of the meeting or something, within reason.
No, immediately following warrants and appointments.
Pledge of allegiance.
Warrants, appointments...
We're not going to back burner, we're not going to be here at ten o'clock on Monday. We're not, I mean, you know, we're going to, we're going to get feedback, people are going to make up the decision, it's going to be, you know, four to one, I'll be the one.
There's not much on it.
It's just, you know, I just...
I take, I accept his friendly amendment of fifteen minutes, that's fine.
No, I just used to losing.
That's fine.
All in favor?
Fine.
Aye.
We'll be reasonable.
Yeah, pause, pause. All right, motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned at nine fifty.
Next scheduled meeting, Monday, September twenty-seventh, there a second on the adjournment? Thank you, Dan. And if you want, all in favor of adjournment?
That's all.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.